Thanks, Luke.
Good morning. I'm going to call this special meeting for the September 15th, 2021, Anchor County Commissioners to order. Gentlemen, you look at your agenda and ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda that's presented.
Seconded. Discussion on the motion. Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. We'll go to our budget workshop. First department we want to review is District Attorney. Morning, Michelle.
Morning.
Michelle, you're welcome to grab a chair and spread your papers out there because it's easier for you. It's up to you how you want to do that. Gentlemen, I direct your attention to Department Three District Attorney. We look at the revenue page.
Joe, I'll kind of guide you through.
Good. BW grant hasn't changed.
Right.
And the deferred payments haven't changed. Any discussion on the revenues?
Could you give me a Reader's Digest version of that BW pay grant?
Would you be able to do that better than I maybe?
Um, I mean, just, I don't know.
For me, well, I'll start it. And for me, in my experience, not having personally done it, is it's sort of a collection of data that helps support the BWA position and funding. I will say, I think if the other two commissioners remember that DA Foster had talked about trying to remove the District Attorney's Office from the requirement, which means the loss of funding. However, I think it's good for two more years.
Right. Make sure it comes up again. It is extensive work. I did the statistical reporting in Washington County. Karen, now someone else is doing that. And Karen does the financial. So there's monthly financial reporting and then there's regular statistical, like every time it's a BWA, we've worked with the victim, there were certain notations that we'd have to make. And then if that wasn't done, I was the reviewer that would make sure that we were actually doing it because they were.
Sure. But just even more basic from that, because it is a grant because we have a, we have seven of them.
Right.
Exactly. We have two of them, correct?
Well, it covers both counties. So it's split 27,500 goes to each county. So it's divided amongst two advocates in this county and two advocates in Washington County. So that's why it's collaboration on reporting on the grant and federal funding. It's the Big Balance Against Women Act that funds that.
Okay. But it's a victim's advocate position that's funded through this grant.
Partially, not a whole position.
That's what I, okay. That's what I needed. Thank you.
And by way of history, it started out that way. They totally funded when they first started it, but they kept decreasing the funding and now it just.
Well, it's for us to create the position. That's usually what the grant, that's the problem with grants like this, but.
Yeah. So we don't, we don't have a position because the grant is available. We have the grant was made available, started the position, and now it just helps support the positions.
Eventually, we're going to shoulder that. That's why Matt's.
Well, and if, and if Matt had his way, this year, we would have shouldered because of the reporting requirements are excessive. But we wouldn't, we didn't consider that this year, you know, for the 21 year.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean that. I don't understand.
And the revenue for the deferred, that's, that's a pass through, is that?
No, that is not, Commissioners. What that is, is so that's, it's, I refer to it as sort of as alternative sentencing or deferred disposition. And so an individual might, through, through consultation, through an agreement, may pay a certain amount to avoid going to jail. And that's what those deferred disposition needs. And currently, there's very little of that going on as much as what was, as it was growing due to, obviously due to COVID. But looking at the numbers, Matt and I, DA Foster and I talked about it and felt that 20,000 would still be sufficient, hoping that maybe if things get back a little bit more normal as they're starting to progress, that it might grow and actually hit the budget number and that that would continue in the next year. Somebody, somebody might pay $15 a month for six months and then go back to the judge. And if the judge, and all parties feel that that's, that's been, all actions have been settled according to the law, then the case would essentially, it's not just going to be settled. I don't know if that's right terminology.
Right. It's a situation where there's a good or a bad outcome. So if they pay the monthly fees and do the conditions of the deferred, it would get a better agreement than where they go to trial or be sentenced on something else. Usually it's $15 a month. They run six months to a year typically. They are starting trials. We started having trials this month. So with that, we anticipate that people will start wanting to take offers because they knew for the last 18 months, there weren't going to be consequences. They're kind of on hold. So they haven't been jumping into various very often. That should change.
Okay. And that deferred, that's, that's, that's money that the county returned.
Yes.
The team?
Yes.
Through the DA's budget.
Yes. But what you've got to remember is, is that for every, if there's a shortage in that revenue, it's the same as overspending a budget line because it has a net effect on the.
Yeah.
Yep. Anything else with regards to revenues? Now, I direct your attention to the expense, the insurance for the DA's office. The salaries and associated employee costs consistent with our countywide policy. So I would draw your attention then down to employee expenses. There is a $500 increase in dues and subscriptions. And I suspect that's just what it is, right? Just an increase in the cost of those.
Right. And we had an attorney that decided she wanted the online law structures. We added her to, that's another addition to that.
So just go down to supplies. Those didn't change from '21 to '22. We want insurance, I mean, equipment didn't change. Insurance has decreased, the liability insurance.
If you remember correctly, the last budget cycle, that DA Foster had indicated that the insurance would actually double. And that did not, fortunately, did not come to fruition. So this is closer to what the actual expense will be.
That's what, that's liability insurance, legal liability insurance. I thought counties were exempt from legal liability through the tort act or.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to remember the specific, this, we had this discussion. We went the route of not paying it and burned the commission in.
Okay.
And I'd have to do a little more research to figure out what exactly, if you probably don't remember. Matt, oh, there we go. DA Foster, maybe you can assist on this one.
I, I believe that, isn't that the bond that we're required to, to hold?
Yes.
For, yes.
Yeah. And if we don't do it, we're completely on the hook.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So is that 100% bonds, Matt?
Um, I believe that's what that line is for, yes.
Okay. I'm just wondering if, for clarity's sake, we could change that description, if that's 100% simply for bonds.
I, I get it. I just, I just.
I'll put a better note in there.
I get it.
Because I can do some research on it and see if it, if it is, yeah. This, this was a big item. I don't know if it was last year or the year before, wasn't it?
Yeah. It's not a big item.
Yeah.
Dollar wise, I, I'm just trying to understand the budget, that's all.
Yep. Let's move on then to contractual services. There's been a reduction in printing, which we'll accept. An increase of $500 in statutes. Michelle touched on.
Yeah, the law books, the West law books, if they all have the statutes increases by 4% every year.
Do they keep the online statutes up to date, like in the books?
The, if I could address that, the online statutes don't have the annotations that give insight into the additional decisions throughout the country regarding other case law and around the state. So although the statutes are available online, the annotations in Westlaw are only available through their printed materials.
So much for modern technology. Okay, we understand that. Copy and maintenance is increased. It's just the actuals.
Yep.
It is what it is. Advertising transcripts and computer software has not changed. Down to witness fees have been changed. And we're going to the reserve account technology. What do you, I seem to want to haul it to Matt. I don't want to haul it to you. What, you're reserving, you're salting money away for project? What's the?
Yes. This, I'm really hoping to be able to implement a computer software program called Citrix File Share, which would allow the DA's office to work with law enforcement agencies to be able to upload their reports into the cloud rather than having to deliver paper copies, save the, the county law enforcement agencies a great deal of time and our office a great deal of time and also save our copying line quite significantly if we can get that implemented. I've been in touch with the Eldred Police Department and the Sheriff's Department who are both willing to work with us on that. We're still trying to determine the actual cost of the, of the program, but I believe it's going to be somewhere between $2,000 and $4,000 a year to be able to implement that program.
Is there, is there a basic startup cost?
There's, there's no startup cost. The, the cost is for the licensing. You can't just buy the program. It's a, it's a online service that you have to subscribe to each year. And it's based on the number of people who have access to it.
Okay, so Scott Atkins, is there $11,539 presently in the G account?
Yes.
Um, so Matt, you want to add $4,000 to your reserve account for this particular technology? You already have $11,000 in that G account and whatnot. And you're saying it's somewhere between $2,000 and $4,000 a year. So why don't you have enough money in a technology account now to implement that for '22 without raising additional funds?
Um, I guess I do, where are the, the balance in the, in the reserve? So if that's, if that's the amount in the reserve, the $11,000, then that's, that's sufficient. I don't, I don't think we need to go up to 500.
I think at some point, I mean, if you, if you, you should pare down that reserve account a couple of years at $4,000 apiece. You're going to start raising money annually for this program. But as it stands right now, you have more than enough money in your reserve account to implement that program and, and run it for, it sounds like for a couple of years. So, Paul?
So, so that reserve account that has a balance in it of 11,500 and change, that is, that reserve account is for only this project?
No, it, the, the reserve account is for technology purchases that need to come up, for instance, replacing computers and things like that as well.
Okay. So, so the reason you're, you're asking for an additional, so, so last year that was?
Thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred.
This year.
Yeah. So he's going to extra 500 to implement this because that, that 3500 must be spoken for, for other, I, for other purchases, right? Well, that's what I, because last year in year 3500, this project was not in there.
Were you trying to?
That's correct.
Were you trying to build some money for this year, Matt? Were you building money this year for this particular program you just spoke of?
I wanted to add to it this year, but I, the other thing that I want to make sure we, we do is we have sufficient money to make sure that our computers are up to date. Right now, we're, we're okay. I, I don't like to let them get out of warranty very far because if we have a computer that dies in the middle of a, or after its warranty is expired, it costs a lot more to the county to replace it out of turn rather than in the normal procedure, because we have to have our main DA technical services set them up and, and purchase them. And when they purchase them as a group, we get a significant discount as opposed to having to replace one in the middle of a, of a year when it's not scheduled.
So in a nutshell, I'm not arguing about the, the $500. I think I get it. What, what the chair's comment led me to wonder is whether that $4,000 appropriation was required, not the extra five. But it sounds like it is because you like to maintain a balance in your reserve account to take care of perpetually computers so that it's, it's budgeted, it's, there's no surprise.
Yes, I, I think it's just the safest way to, to proceed. Obviously, $500 isn't going to make a big difference over this, next year. But I like to maintain that account so that there's no surprises.
Yeah. So this is in addition. That's why the $500 is the point I'm.
The thing is, Paul, is that between the 2,000 to 4,000, he needs to implement this new program in '22. And a few thousand here and a few thousand there to buy some new computers if he needs those. He has more than enough money presently in his reserve account. He doesn't need to raise more money today. And so I'm saying that he can't justify the 4,000 additional to the 11,500. He doesn't have $11,000 worth of projects earmarked for '22. And it's, you know, I, I fully appreciate wanting to have reserve funds set aside for emergency, emergency purchases. You know, you lose a computer or whatever. But if you're going to have a program that where you're going to replace computers as they expire or become whatever, you need to get together with, with our IT people and develop that program so that you can present us with what you're going to need over the next two, three, four years for equipment. Because right now, telling us that if, if a computer goes to hell, I want to replace that, doesn't give us a number. I'm not going to, I'm not going to agree to, to any of this 4,000. I don't think, I think, I think the DA has, has failed to justify why he needs more money than that for '22. And I think there needs to be a better presentation in the future as to what he's reserving his money for. This is the same argument we're going to have with the, with the sheriff with cruisers. You can't just walk in and say, well, if I, if I lose a cruiser, I want to buy a new one. So I want to keep a couple hundred thousand. You've got to come up with a capital plan to justify this reserve account, and we don't have that today. John, these averages in the actuals for five years, $5,000.
$2,000.
And that's 5,000 that he's raised. It's not 5,000 he spent. Is that correct?
That, that would be accurate. Yeah. I was going to say be careful in the 70 accounts because in, in the end, if you, if you transfer their balance left over at the end, then it's going to be the full amount. So part of that could have been expenditures during the year. Part of it could have gone to the 11,539 balance. Yep. My only caution here is, is that to eliminate all of it is, in order to work, I just heard a comment about there's not 11,539 expenses in 2022. But however, in 2023, if you work this plan out, there might be 25,000.
Exactly.
And the same thing with the vehicles. So while I understand what the chair is saying, I just want to caution the commission that to not put anything in there might be, might not, might not work, might not be to the best interest of, of the District Attorney's Office.
Yeah, because, because I understand that an account like this is a shock absorber. So that, you know, you get, because it's going to go like this over the years, right? And, and the reason for a capital account is to flatten that out. So I guess I agree. Well, I, I guess I don't know what, because I don't, I don't know what the plan is.
Well, and that's, I was just going to make that point, because that, the chair had an excellent point with that. The problem though with that plan is that this county has not been in the position to actually do that for several years until the last couple. And there's no excuse. I mean, between myself and Chuck, I mean, there's just to find the time to actually do this and to plan this out. It does need to be done.
Well, it's going to take time.
Right. So that's why I just caution, I can't tell you what the amount is, but I would, I would say to completely eliminate it might not be the best thing. But you can, you can just know that you can turn around and recover next year.
The problem is, is that the number that they're proposing is so arbitrary. They cannot support it with anything except perhaps a new program they want to implement, implement next year. And even that's somewhat arbitrary. And that's somewhere between 2,000 and 4,000, which is, you know. We're talking about budget preparation here. And he's throwing a number out here with absolutely no support. And that's not good budgeting.
Well, how we could, so how we can buy this? What we could do is, is see, I mean, you must have it in there. We've got a few years here, but we could see if that balance is growing or whether it's getting smaller and just add in the projects that the DA is talking about. Pretty straightforward. You must have three or four years there in the magic box.
Well, I think the right process is just what the chair was explaining, is to do a capital plan for the future. Because what happened in the past really, that just, that's kind of a, a water under the bridge, I guess.
Yeah.
And if I'm going to, if we're going to spend any time, productive time, would be to develop a capital plan.
We're going.
Simplest, as, you know, the DA's office providing, how many computers you have, what's the current status? And again, when do they need to be replaced? Just like we do with the maintenance department. And this needs to be done. And Chuck and I have had this conversation many times. And, and it's just a matter of finding the time. And, and this needs to be done, and Chuck and I have had this conversation many times, and, and it's just a matter of finding the time to do it and to coordinate. And to, to get there, it's just, once we get there, I don't want to be completely, uh, void of any funds to help sufficiently.
In the meantime.
In the meantime, yeah. But that's, I mean, 4,000 is not a lot of money. If you want to zero that out this year and that's the commission, just know that next year, when, if the, when, if the, when the capital plan is done, then you may need 10,000. Might not.
And I would support 10,000 next year where they plan in front of us as opposed to 4,000 with no idea what they need it for. And that's my problem with this is that we need, we need to, we need to, to decide this based upon documentation in front of us. We don't have anything.
Well, okay, so, so I, I think we're all agree with it there. We're just going to figure out the road to get there. And the, do we, I mean, to me, that amount is not egregious for what you're trying to accomplish. But I have no way of proving that.
Right.
So, but I do know that probably 1,000 is low. To, I mean, that's a computer. And I don't know how many, I mean, I guess how many computers are in there. There gotta be 10 computers in there. Okay, so let's call it 12. And they get replaced every three years. So that proves that number.
And this, I mean, roughly. Everything you just said is arbitrary. We have no idea how many computers he has. We don't have any idea when the warranty is going to run out on those computers that can't be supported. That's the capital plan we need. I'm, you know, I wouldn't bet my firstborn son on this. There's no way he's going to spend more than $11,000 for 2022. 2023, we get the documentation we need and we start building the reserve account based upon good information, not on subjective information that we're getting today. And 4,000, here, 4,000 there, after a while, Paul, sets up real money, so.
No, I, I, I get it. I'm agreeing. I just, I, I'm just, um.
I mean, you just, it just feels almost mean to take the 4,000 away from him. And I'm saying that until we get good documentation, we have a buffer of $11,000 and, Paul, we have a history of where we can dip into an account to assist a department who has a catastrophic emergency. And so there's no way that, that, that Matt's not going to get what he needs in 2022, no matter what we budget this thing. We cut it total.
Basically, that's three years, you know, just back. And I know, I know it's arbitrary, but it's a little more than arbitrary. Computers, three to five years, three years, they cost about $1,000. So it's, it's, it's really not arbitrary. It's a good guess, but.
So I, I, I mean, we're, there's $12,000. We've got three years there. If, if we cut it, uh, if we cut it.
You're right, Mr. Chair, you, you, it's, you just can't, we've got to deal with this before year two.
You may have a bigger issue in, in next year's budget. That's all.
That's all, yeah.
And that issue, if that gets bigger, it's based upon good documentation, and IT's got involved, helped him with his technology needs and whatnot. That's what we need in front of us. We're paying big bucks for IT. Then Matt should be accessing that, that resource and reassuring us that every dollar he's asking for is documented and needed. We don't have that today.
Yeah, here's, here's another question. Why is this here not in IT? Is it because there's some reimbursement?
Has to get budgeted in each department.
Yeah, uh, again, specifically what the capital plan is for would determine whether it goes IT or not. Uh, the other item is that, of course, uh, they're on, the DA's office is on a separate system, for lack of a better term. And, and IT really, um, has very little, if any, control. I'm, I'm sure that they work collaboratively, but it's, it's a state of the game system. So the three of you have a number that you can agree upon, or?
Because when I look at IT, their reserve account for technology, their ask for IT is Department 14. And if you go to their technology account, the reserve account, their ask for 2022 is only $7,500. This is the IT department. One department out there is asking for 4,000, more than half of what IT is asking for in total. Now, I don't know how many computers IT buys for other departments. But I just find it interesting that, uh, there, I mean, I would have thought for the one department wanting 4,000, IT would be wanting 40,000. So I, I just don't know how to relate these two numbers. I got to tell you that I have more confidence in giving 7,500 to tech, to IT than I do 4,000 to the DA's office.
So what was that balance a year ago?
What do you mean?
Because we're looking at the reserve account, of, of that reserve account. Did any, I guess the question I'm asking, did anything get spent out of that?
So, so we added 35.
Yeah, we added 3,500, yeah.
Was there, yeah, was there anything taken out of it? Or did it just increase by 35?
Because that would be, that would sort of be our answer.
No, 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 that's what, that's what I'm telling you. If we're going to spend any time, if you're going to make a decision today and that's the direction that you want to go, what was spent there last year without a game plan really doesn't tell you much other than what was spent.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that, that's all, that's all, that's all that will tell you.
Yeah.
Um, because with no game plan, you have no idea what that final figure needs to be.
Exactly.
So without knowing what it needs to be, you have no idea how to plan to get there.
I mean, if we spent 3,500 for fuel and whatnot last year, probably a good idea, we'd just spend another 35, because you know that's a recurring cost. You don't know what he spent, if he spent any money last year. You don't know.
Out of that account.
Out of that account. You don't know what that is for. And that's the problem. We don't have that documentation. Are you looking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the proposal that's on the table now is sort of with that $4,000.
That's my proposal, and, and we want to answer your question before we, we blow on. I am interested, John, in your thoughts after all this.
I agree that we need to get a plan in place. I think I split it to 2,000 until the account 2,000 for the year. There's a express intent that we want to plan in place for the next budget.
Okay, that, that's a reasonable compromise. Paul, we're going to reduce it to two thousand here. And Matt, you need to sit down with IT or whoever, and you need to get this capital plan together in support of whatever this is going to be in 2023. Okay?
Uh, yep, that's fine. Um, we do have our own IT through the District Attorneys Association, so I have never communicated with county IT department. Uh, and this is the.
Access your resources, yeah, access your resources and come up with a capital plan that supports whatever your ask is going to be for 23, okay?
Yep.
Then by general consensus, gentlemen, we're going to reduce to 4,000 to 2,000, okay? Okay. Copy, purchase, and changes or anything else with regards to the expenditures for the DA's office? Hearing, um, is that the only adjustment we made? So we can reduce that to body six, six, two, eight, four. Is that correct?
So, so no, no money was spent out of that account last year, but money was placed in, so we had a $3,300 transfer in. So the 2,000, I think it's a sufficient number.
And I can simply remove 2,000 from the, the department totals, right, Scott?
Ye, yes.
So that number is four, six, six, two, eight, four now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so a, a, a question that I had is, uh, there's copier purchase here. So that's a capital account that you're putting away for a, a purchase of a copier at some time in the future. Copier maintenance, so it's not, we're buying this copier and the maintenance is for the maintenance of it.
Right, we have a maintenance agreement on all our copiers. It's, it's a volume discount type.
And, and that does not include the copier?
No.
Okay.
No, separate from the copier. So I have a question for DA Foster. You still on that?
Yeah, he's there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this year, what we're doing, if you're in full agreement that at 2,000, I'm going to change your presentation and therefore avoid any questions or conversations with the BAC? Or would you rather leave the 4,000 there and I guess in?
Do you want to go to the BAC and argue for 4,000, Matt?
There you go.
I don't want to put any pressure on you either. I just, you have the ability and you're not going to offend us. If you still want 4,000, you can go to the BAC and ask them for it. And if they're, then we'd have to reconsider that if they agreed with your request to them.
No, I, I have no reason to do that. 2,000 is fine.
Okay, so what do we change your ask to 2,000? So it's, it's one of those deals, Matt, where the BAC looks at it and says there's no discrepancy between, there's no difference between the department head and the commissioners, and it's a done deal. So it just makes the process easier, okay?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, anything further with regards to the DA's budget? Matt, thank you for joining us this morning. Michelle, thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Now it's moved to Department 17. What did you tell restorative justice, uh, Scott, with regards to reviewing that budget this morning?
I asked him to be here this morning, and I'm assuming you've seen the email dialogue. There was a request, I mean, the first.
And they knew we started at 8:30?
Yes, yeah, yeah, I believe they're on it. Yeah.
Oh, oh, they're on Zoom. Nice technology. Okay, good, thank you. Dan, let's go to Department 17. And let's go to restorative justice request. Last meeting. After the last meeting went down, I asked Scott to send a request to the restorative justice asking them for caseload data. On how many cases they have handled. And if you look pages at numbered, you look after, uh, the budget summary. Starts with, uh, Dallas Restorative Justice CSC work. As a case breakdown by town in the past two years. So, uh, let's see, this was sent to us by, Melissa, are you on this morning? Do I see Melissa?
Yes, yes, I am.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, Melissa, so, uh, as I look for the case breakdown last two years. Can I add? The first four bullet points, 17, four, three, and two, is that, uh, does that represent the number of cases you handled in Ellsworth the last two years?
May, may, may I answer the, the question? Sorry. So, so in Ellsworth, that represents the number of cases, but not the number of youths, the number of youths. Um, so, you know, we, we will sometimes have several referrals that result in one case. But yes, this is the number of cases in Ellsworth and doesn't account for the number of participants.
A, a case is an incident where multiple juveniles could be involved? Does that make sense more?
Um, most of the time, sometimes, um, it's a couple of incidents that are somehow connected.
All right, so really we're talking about 17, 21, 24, 26 cases then, right, in Ellsworth last two years? I'm adding 17, four more and three more and two more?
No, a, a, a little bit less than that, sorry. That, those, those, um, the youth, that the 17 was actually a, um, age, um, why, why I put that there. Um, so, so we're looking at.
I'm sorry, hang on just a minute, please. I mean, Paul, it's, uh, restorative justice.
Restorative justice.
So, so we're looking at 12 youths in Ellsworth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Now we're talking about these numbers. Uh, tell me again, Leslie, what is the, uh, what's, what's, you said the 17 is, is not a case number?
That one is just the age of the youth. That's not a number, sorry.
So are we talking about, uh, four, three, seven, two, nine cases in the last two years in Ellsworth?
Four.
Maybe at least 10. I think that person was at least one person.
10 cases, 10 cases in the last two years.
Well, if you take the four, three, and two is, is nine, and then that top one doesn't have a number, so I'm assuming it's at least one.
It's one.
Okay, so we got one up here. Okay. All right, so now we're talking, uh, in Ellsworth, we're talking 10 cases. Blue Hill?
Blue Hill, we're talking, um, two cases.
Two trespassing vandalism?
Right.
Okay, the two bullet points is two cases. Orland is one case.
Orland is one case.
Two cases in, um, Eastbrook?
Two cases in Eastbrook.
One in Orland?
Uh, two in Orland.
Oh, two different spots, yeah.
The same participants in two cases?
So two in Orland, yes.
No, are the same participants involved in two different cases? Is that what happened there?
Two, no, two different, two different participants in one case.
Well, that's one case, though.
It's one case, but it's two participants, which is two.
You just said, you just said that we were talking about cases, not number of kids.
Okay, I, I realize because sometimes the participants, um, th, these are separate referrals. So sometimes we have cases where there are, occasionally we have cases where it's one incident, incident, but multiple part, potentially multiple referrals, but we don't get all referrals. And every case we handle or every referral we handle from the DOC has to be dealt with individually, even though we roll it into one extended process.
Okay, so you want to classify Orland as two cases?
Right.
Sullivan is one case?
Sullivan is one case.
Rebel, one case?
Is one case.
Bucksport, one case?
Was two ca, was two, two cases, was two, two referrals.
Under that same scenario that, uh?
Right, right.
Benop Scott, one case?
Benop Scott, one case.
MDI?
MDI Trenton was four, and in fact, two of the four lived in Ellsworth, but I put their numbers here. Because the, the incident, it was, you know, multiple, a multiple visiting of several homes where vandalism occurred.
There's a four for that and one for Hancock.
Leslie, how's the, um, how would you characterize the pandemic's effect? Leslie, how's the, how would you characterize the pandemic's effect on the town?
We had no, we had basically no referrals from March 2020 through fall of 2020. So things really did slow down for us. As much as possible, whenever there was, you know, law enforcement called, the summonses were not written up for juveniles. And I know this is, this is the case across the state. So yes, so our cases were way down in 2020 because of this. Not way down, but they were down.
And when we look at the note that you had in here that there's 119 individuals that were directly impacted, is that for time period? Is that?
That's, that, when we take into account, you know, I think I give, we give a little summary at the top of this document. When you take into account all the people that participate in the conferences, so the person who's not listed in these cases, we're talking about the two referrals. When we're talking about, for instance, that multiple home burglary, we were talking four separate victims, if you'd like. So when we take into account all the people who have been affected by an incident and all the people who've participated and the impact it's had, that's what that number is. And that's why in each of these, each of these cases, I gave a little bit of a description of who was present and who was, you know, affected by it. And then also additional, what positive outcomes were. And a number of cases, I'd like to just to point out that trespassing orders were, you know, lifted by stores. And this is, this is something that really doesn't happen within the court system usually, you know, for years. And that's just to point to the fact that people who participate, who are victims, have been satisfied to the point of removing, removing any court ordered, you know, no trespassing or no conditions.
Well, quite honestly, gentlemen, I had the same problem with this organization as I have in Drug Court. And it has to do with the amount of money being spent for the program when you relate it to the number of clients that they directly serve. So if you take the 28 and divide that and have 14 and if you divide that into the 15,000, $1,000 a client doesn't sound like too much. But when you divide that, if they don't increase their client base for the next two years, then, and you include that, you divide that into 22, six and whatnot, then you're talking substantially more. And I don't know what, I don't know what the magic number is.
May I respond?
Yes.
So also I'm just saying that when you, when you're talking about that number of 28, that number is far beyond 28. There, for every single case, we have at least one harmed party or one victim, if not multiple victims. And so we're serving them as well. Many of these cases have community members, neighbors, or friends who've been directly affected by an incident, and we serve them as well. We also do this extended work in schools anymore, which is really, if you want, you can see that as like preemptive work for this.
Excuse me, Leslie, you're getting extra money from the state for some of your other programs. Is that correct?
We are being, some of our funds come from the DOC, but our DOC funds are getting, as you know, they are coming through Restorative Justice Project Maine. Those funds not only pay for, you know, a portion of the work we do, those funds also pay for a full-time employee at, in Belfast, they pay for the insurance that we need to cover all our mentors away with. They pay for a portion of our training. So yes, we do receive funds from elsewhere. We're in the process of, both Melissa and Brad are here, we're in the process of just trying to rethink our structuring. It is possible that for next fiscal year, we will have made headroads into actually working with the DOC directly. This is just, we're just in that process of trying to figure this out now, so.
Down East Justice covers what geographical area? I may have asked you this before, can you tell us?
Hancock County right now, just basically Hancock County.
So does Hancock County get a budget from the state? In other words, do you get a portion of that money that goes to, you said Belfast somehow?
No, not, not at this point. Not at this point.
You're not getting any of that DOC money in Down East Restorative Justice?
We are, but it's rolled into, it's rolled into an unsupparable from, if you want, the contract they have with the Belfast organization.
Okay, now with regards to your comment on, on serving several victims at the time on one case and whatnot, I mean, it strikes me that that's like the sheriff saying, we investigated 500 accidents, but we had we had three times that many vehicles, so we should get credit for 1,500. I mean, a case is a case regardless of, to me, a case is a case regardless of how many victims you might have as opposed to, I don't know.
Well, it's, if I may again, it's not really the same thing because the whole point of this process is for people to come to a point where they feel something has been repaired. And that is not one-sided. That's not just the youths that now have to, and, and, you know, as we, as we're talking about, we're kind of really are working on a number of like adult referrals, so it's not just the person who's committed a crime, who has to answer in a meaningful way. The victim has a very active say in how how, you know, their harm gets repaired. So they are an active participant. They're not like a bystander. It's not like a byproduct. Like they are, they are in the process for the process to be able to work. This does not work without the person who has been hurt.
Leslie, you know, I'm sure you watched, you know, like the last meeting and what was discussed there. So I think one of the big concerns that the commissioners have is that we bear such a large percentage of the funding, what happens if a couple of the council changes or the temperament of the council changes? And we're like, yep, sorry, we've had enough. And then you don't get any money from the county. What's, what's going to happen? So I don't, that's not trying to sound like I'm threatening something in saying it, but it's more like the practical side of, of how you're being funded. So I wondered a little bit, like when I see, like, you know, you're working with the different schools and the different communities. Are you guys going to the town council of the different towns and asking them to help support the effort?
Okay, I'm going to pass this over to Brad for a moment, who is also on our board.
Sure.
So it's, it's kind of funny, gentlemen. We had already planned to be meeting next month on the structure and diversification and our relationship as being sponsored by the Restorative Justice Project of Maine, which is based out of Waldo County. And so our ears were already wide open when you last spoke about the need for us to diversify. It's really figuring out how to get that runway to get to that point. While demand for restorative practices is growing very rapidly. And we think that with the easing of COVID and with us adding adult cases and with the demand that we've seen just in this past year from schools, that we're going to have a lot of work cut out for ourselves. And I totally understand that it's, it's hard for you to pay for stuff when we don't know exactly what, which, which buckets that's going to go into, but we are seeing this overall trend of increased demand for restorative practices. And yeah, I'll leave it there and see what your response is.
Well, gentlemen, they're asking, if you look at your notes, the 26% increase is noted here and whatnot is based upon the commissioners, not their ask. They're asking for a 51% increase for over 21. I don't have to even go there if any department head came to us and said, I want a 50% increase in my budget. So I'm suggesting that we would be extremely generous in approving a 20% increase for any Department 17 request. That's $18,750, and that would be my suggestion for funding for 22 for restorative justice.
Could I ask, if we were expecting a doubling of workload, how would be the best way to present that to you gentlemen, at least in the future? I mean, I don't know if your mind is made up on this go around, but we're really expecting a huge increase in the amount of work that we're going to be doing in the coming year.
My personal opinion is, is that if the registry deeds come to us and said, there's been a statute change that required a significant increase in the work that we're going to have to perform. And we are statutorily obligated to provide that service. There's not, there's not much we can do about denying that request for the increase. That's the difference. We do not have a statutory obligation to support restorative justice. And that's why you people are at a disadvantage on getting this kind of an increase because we don't have a statutory obligation. We are basically, and as Paul just said, and we said last time, we don't want to be the sole supporter. We don't want to be held accountable for significant increases when we don't have a statutory responsibility for that. So in response to that, I can tell you that you could take your argument, your justification to the Budget Advisory Committee, ask them to consider your need and see what their response is, and then we would have to deal with their recommendation back to us.
Where I'm having trouble, this is an alternative to something being dealt with through the district attorney's office. That's what this is. In a nutshell, is that a fair assessment?
Well, every case.
I would say so. I mean, a lot of the work that we do is long-term preventative, community building type work, but yeah, the eventual goal is that fewer people show up and some of it is a lot more direct.
Okay, so the question is, if we're not seeing, you know, corresponding savings in the district attorney's office, why are we doing this? I mean, I get the feel good part of it, but you know, what we're doing is we're shifting, this organization shifts, you know, the workload from one organization to another.
And that's a good point.
One, we're statutorily required to.
Well, if, if I may.
Just a minute, please. And that's exactly right, Paul, because the DDA's office would enjoy less work because of restorative justice, but they're not going to, they're not going to spend one dime less in their expenditure. It didn't save them money, just saved them time and effort. So for us to spend money for restorative justice, we're going to add to the services we are providing, not transferring money from.
But, you know, I'm being, maybe I'm oversimplifying, but to me, if we're doing this, one, we're statutorily obligated to, to support. The other, we're not. And the reason for this is the shift, the workload from one organization to the other. But that's not giving us a corresponding savings. So, I mean, I get it, I like the program, but
I would like to say.
Why are we doing it?
When this has been studied. Just a second. Leslie asked to be recognized, please. Leslie, do you have a comment?
I think, I think Brad was going to go in this direction. I'll pass on to him if he was going to add something else, but restorative justice has been recognized as cost-saving, not just because it's taken something away initially from the whole judicial system, which it is in that way, from the whole process, but it's also cost-saving because it cuts back on recidivism. And you're actually bringing up some important points that we were hoping to be able to get to earlier in this year, and we hope that this will be on the table this coming year, is that you're absolutely right that a portion of the funding we receive is lessening the DA's load. And so the question would be, like, down the road, whether it's next year or the following year or the year after that, is it possible to foresee how we are working towards, like, in some ways, a common purpose of like safety in the community? And therefore, yes, perhaps the DA funding would come down a little bit, or maybe their expenses have risen in other ways, but so that this is really seen very much as part of your mandate, even though it's not explicitly so. And I just believe that this is a a real conversation, but not one that can be had, you know, in 15 minutes. And so I don't know if Brad, you were going to add something else to that?
Go ahead, Brad.
No, that, that was pretty much it. Yeah, when this has been studied, it does represent a real cost savings. And so I would love to see for Hancock County moving forward, and it's going to take us time to figure out. But exactly as Leslie said, maybe we end up becoming part of that mandate. I don't know what that looks like in terms of if, if we can connect those dots more clearly moving forward in terms of specific. Meanwhile, we have to kind of infer based on studies that have been carefully done in other places.
Well, and the other thing for me is, I mean, I get it. Is it working, you know, that is, you know, is, this is a different avenue. I mean, are these folks popping back up in the system? Is it working? That's something else I would like to see in the future.
Well, for.
Wrong address on their application, of course.
They put it on your application?
Yeah, they inverted the number, so I avoided the old check.
Hey, Lee, you're, you're.
Yeah, so there, you know, it hasn't been in Hancock County long enough to be able to generate those kinds of statistics. But on the, but on the cases you're seeing, yes, these, these youths have not re-offended. There are, however, statistics, which is what Brad was referring to nationwide. There have been studies nationwide that show the numbers and the effect of this program.
Yeah, for me, the question is, are they back in the manual police car or not? There is one more, there's one more issue here that comes back to me personally, too, and that comes from a management standpoint. When we have a department head come to us and ask for funding, we also have the ability to some involvement in the management of that department. And when we get into department, supporting Department 17 entities, we don't have the ability to involve ourselves in management, in personnel issues and how that's managed, into how you spend your money. And for me, that's one of the best reasons that I refrain or try to limit the amount of input financially we want into Department 17s because we're not getting a corresponding ability to help manage that agency. So anyways, gentlemen, we've got to move on here, whatnot. I make, Leslie, we don't take votes on preliminary budget issues. What we look for is a general consensus. And so I'm going to ask, gentlemen, can we generally consent to $18,750 for restorative justice in 2022?
I'm sticking with where we were at the last meeting at 19,000, just to keep it.
I'm sticking with where we were at the last meeting in 19,000, just to keep it. I, it may have been the same logic to, which is very specific. So 19 sounds like the number. Go ahead, John.
Another thing I was going to say is, and I think that number's appropriate. I don't really think the caseloads are going to increase to a huge degree this year because I think a lot of the same things that kept the case loads down last year are going to happen this year, at least to some, some degree. So it might not be as large of an increase as you're predicting. So.
Paul, do you agree with 19,000?
Yeah, I agreed with it last time and nothing changed.
Then I'm going to, I'm going to say that by general consensus, we, we're going to submit 19,000 to the Budget Advisory Committee for Downey's Restorative Justice for 2022. Thank you for your involvement this morning, folks.
Thank you.
We're going to move on now to.
Thank you.
Rest of the department 17, get back to EMDC. They've asked for a $500 increase. What is your pleasure, gentlemen? I can tell you that because of, because of the COVID, we haven't had quite as much involvement with them in the last year, but we didn't for that, correct, Scott? We do get services from them. We do have some interaction with them. It's just been limited this last 12, 15 months. I'm not, I'm not opposed to modest increase in that request. John? Still trying to catch on.
I thought we'd just keep it the same, but.
Well.
Mike?
I don't mean to interrupt you, John.
I'm sure he's got a comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Reader's Digest version of extra $500.
Is anybody on this?
Yeah, I know Lee was on there.
All right. This is Lee Umpree. I'm, I'm here.
Lee, the justification for an increase in your ask?
Yes, yes, Commissioner. And I just want to clarify, our engagement in Hancock County didn't diminish. We may not have been in contact with the commissioners and, and the office, but the work that we do in workforce and business lending and working with municipalities in some ways increased. We pivoted a lot of our work to be online and reaching people. In fact, right now we're doing a all-day seminar on grant writing with state and federal and foundation people, and there are several Hancock County nonprofits who are participating. And the idea behind that is EMDC is helping organizations how to access funds, but even better, how to leverage those funds and not duplicate efforts. So we, you know, a lot of what we do is kind of behind the scenes, but we help projects and programs and people how to get the best bang for their buck. And we do the same thing. Yesterday I was meeting with Penobscot County in helping them be part of the process and how they're going to distribute some of the federal funds, pandemic-related funds in an equitable way throughout the county. So our workforce clients has increased in Hancock County. You know, sadly, the opioid epidemic is still out there for us and the issues surrounding people who are incarcerated and getting them back to work is a real challenge. Some of the small businesses, we've helped with CARES Act, and I do believe through Scott, I forwarded to you all the list of Hancock County businesses that we provided technical assistance and then providing the funds. So we've played a role in partnership with D E C D and Hancock County has been a big part of that. It was quite a significant amount. I can't recall off the top of my head and how much money was distributed in Hancock County. And that came after a process of helping them fill out their application and determining, you know, the best way not only to access that money, but how to use that in their business to grow.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Paul, you all set with that?
Yeah, I, I, I.
Okay.
You get funding from other communities, so you're asking for a 5% increase from them also?
Yes, yes. And, and some of them have come forward with even a bigger increase because we've stepped up during the pandemic. But Piscataquis, Penobscot, Hancock and Waldo all contribute. And then mostly we applied for state, we're part of state funding and we applied to federal grants. And that's what EMDC as a nonprofit gets its funding. During the pandemic, with all these funding streams, not only are we looking to bolster existing programs, but to help municipalities, counties and nonprofits and businesses, how to access, but more importantly, how best to use that money. And, and for counties too, you know, especially, there's so many funding sources with EPA and EDA and everything else. One of the things we're keen on is making sure that everybody uses the new money in a certain way and doesn't duplicate efforts that might be already a funding source that's available.
Okay, John, is there any problem with the 9500? I have no problem with that. Paul, you okay? Then by general consensus, we're going to send 9500 to the BAC. Lee, can you stay with us though for a minute?
Yes.
While Lee is here, gentlemen, I'd like to move right down to Hancock County Planning Commission. And I'm not even sure, Lee, what, what role you play there, but by some chance, I'd like to have you at least listen to this discussion here, okay?
Yes, yes. And that, that will be fine.
Is there somebody on this morning from Hancock County Planning Commission?
Hello, I'm Jared Gillette, the executive director.
I'm Jim Fisher. I'm the chairman of the Board of Directors for Hancock County Planning Commission.
Morning, Johns. Good to see you again. So we have a 32% increase in the planning commission's ask. John, Jared, who wants to take the lead on justifying that?
Let me start by thanking you for having us today and you may not know, but historically, and you have to go back some years, we were funded more substantially by the county and the state. We, we shut down, as you know, in 2019 and reorganized in 2020 and had requested, I believe in 2020, something like what we're asking now, 3,000, 16,400. And we're given less than that, but we're really ramped up in a big way. And I wanted, I, I know I'm struggling with some fairly limited bandwidth. We sent a report this morning, and I should have sent it last night, just oversight to Scott Adkins outlining some of the things we've done this year, but we're growing very quickly. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Jared. He's got better bandwidth and he's got his feet on the ground on, on day-to-day operations. I, I realize this is a substantial increase though, and it's because we're growing and doing a lot more than we could do last year. So Jared, take it away.
Jared, as you.
Thank you, Jim.
Jared, as you make your presentation, understand that we, we, we were in high appreciation of the work from Hancock County Planning five, six, seven years ago. You know, they were providing valuable services to the communities and Hancock County acknowledged that. And of course, the unfortunate situation in 2019 has really turned us off. And so we need to be reassured that we're getting back to that status that, you're getting back to the status that you people enjoyed and that we, that we recognized in, in prior to 2019. So with that in mind, go ahead and make your presentation this morning.
Well, thank you for having an audience with me today and letting me talk about where we've been in the past fiscal year and then where we're going. And, you know, I'd like to start off with HCPC, when we relaunched and brought me on as the executive director, we completely revamped and also had third parties vet our financial internal controls. And that was done through, you know, having MMA, Main Municipal Association, you know, review our updated policies, giving us their seal of approval, as well as our state agencies that contract us to provide technical assistance. And so when I came on and since, you know, we've been operating over the past, you know, year, we have all of our state contracts backed and full confidence in the state of Maine for us to provide technical assistance for land use, transportation and economic development in Hancock County. And I'd also like to reiterate that we have nearly full membership again for the municipalities in Hancock County. There are some towns who traditionally were, I believe they've actually slowly working towards deorganization, some of them, or are with the Land Use Planning Commission. So it would not make logical sense for them to be a member of Hancock County Planning Commission. But I want to say that, you know, what we've accomplished in the past year is not only reconfiguring our own internal controls and policies to be more transparent and to have more assurance that we are, you know, operating by the books and having very clear books. But then I'd like to say too, in the past year since we've reopened, we have been, I mean, I have been out straight. We are now up to, I want to say, I have to look at my report to give you an exact number. We have currently nine comprehensive plans on the go. We are helping a municipality in Washington County as well, where there is no staff planning in Washington County. We have four other comprehensive plans pending. That will bring us up to 13 comprehensive plans. We have a range of transportation projects that we've been working on. And so, you know, what we've done in, you know, the past year, we have worked quite extensively too on tourism promotion and sort of mapping that also benefits the unorganized territories, working with Down East Decatur Regional Tourism. We've provided climate change story maps, looking at the transportation infrastructure in Deer Isle and Stonington. You know, we've worked on some transportation projects which are looking at sideways scenic byway signage and inventory and assessment, which would be steps in, you know, the next step for that would be a corridor management update for some of these scenic byways, particularly the Scudic National Scenic Byway, as well as providing pedestrian and safety audits in coalition with Maine DOT and the Bicycle Coalition of Maine. You know, and then we also just provide general technical assistance. And I, and I want to say one thing that we get a lot of calls on in our office are land use questions from would-be and new residents looking to build or purchase properties or start home-based businesses within the unorganized territories. And that's, I think, something that, you know, it's not a deliverable project that we're putting out there with an actual piece of paper attached to it, but it is something that this office does, is getting daily calls for tourism, people asking, where can we go? What can we do? Along the national scenic byways as well as, you know, what kind of land uses can I do? And what are the regulations and what are the steps that I have to go to, to develop in Hancock County? And so that's, you know, some of the work that we have done. And I want to say our, our biggest sort of milestone that we recently completed was our household hazardous waste collection event. And that is, you know, that alone, I think, is one of HCPC's best services that we can provide to divert pollutants and contaminants from our environment and from our water sources and water tables in Hancock County. And often a lot of the illegal dumping does occur in, you know, sort of the less inhabited areas such as the unorganized territories. So that service as well is something that, you know, I'm really glad that we were able to bring that back and provide that to residents of Hancock County. That's just where we have been. Where we're going, you know, we are an agency that is always looking to what is coming in the future, what are the current needs, and trying to anticipate what future needs will be for Hancock County. And a ma, a goal that we have is to really expand our household hazardous waste collection and to really try and tackle the problem associated with recycling and solid waste management in Hancock County. And to do that more efficiently, we think that instead of having one centralized location where you would bring your household hazardous waste, that we would have more regular and mobile collection events so that we can divert even more materials from getting into our environment. Other things that we're working on in the future, well, FY22 is looking at tackling the housing issues that we have in Hancock County. We have, in a very short amount of time, gone from being an affordable place to live to many communities now, according to the Maine Housing Authority, having an unaffordable metric for median income earners, as well as we face real development pressures on our land. Our population has grown or well. The census says one thing, but you know, people's observation says another thing, and I think that school enrollment figures are a better indicator. And the projections are that it will only keep going. People will view rural Maine as a safe haven from whatever is going on elsewhere, and we need to be able to manage that growth in a manner so that the land can still hold us. And that's a project that we are working on as well, is how do we add and how do we have more subdivisions in a manner that doesn't, you know, detract from the carrying capacity of our region, as well as looking at how we can integrate affordable and economic housing into that. So that's just two of the things that we're looking towards in FY22. You know, other things that we're working on is Peninsula Tomorrow, which this is a multi-town program, working on sea level rise and climate change, how we prepare and adapt. We'll be working with the Down East Fisheries Partnership and looking at what type of alternatives could exist should lobster and the lobster industry ever face a sudden decline or rupture or impact in trying to diversify the fisheries industry so that we have a much larger buffer against, you know, that type of, you know, swing that can occur in our economy and has occurred before, as well as trying to educate and advance communities about alternative infrastructure projects to mitigate tidal storm surges. And also, you know, it's the stream crossing grant season, and we've got communities asking us to help fix culverts. How do we address simple and, well, not simple, but how do we address very serious infrastructure challenges and navigate a pretty complex and at times labyrinthine grant.
Jared, I think we get a good sense of, of, of the fact that you're back in business again. I'm really impressed.
And doing everything.
Yeah. I, can you? We want to, I just want to switch to your finances for a second. I'm confused about something. Can I look at your submission for finances? You talked about a total operating budget of $99,000. But when you talk about sources of funding, it's like quarter of a million. I don't understand what you're saying here. I mean, you don't have a, you don't have $150,000 surplus in the bank, do you?
Uh, no, we do not. When I, I, we have to, so when we work on state contracts, we have different state agencies that operate on either a fiscal year or a calendar year. And then we have our municipal contracts that operate, some towns are on fiscal years and some towns are on calendar years. And so we put those together and it often looks much better on paper than what it actually is. We don't really have. I'd say that we operate on pretty thin margins and, you know, we managed to hold our ground this year and not, you know, have anything in the red. But these are contracts that are, you know, and the other thing too is we also have monthly and quarterly drawdown. So these are sometimes contracts that go on for two fiscal years. So they, this is the amount of money that we're contracted to provide technical service on. We cost us about $100,000 right now to operate this office. My goal is to expand and hire. I need to onboard new staff to keep pace with where we're going. And we all are also dealing with, you know, the inflation issues that I think everybody else is dealing with.
Okay, Jared, back up here. You got a $100,000 operating budget and you got 256,000 in income. Are you spending twenty-five-six thousand a year or are you spending a hundred thousand?
We would be spending uh, close to a hundred thousand dollars a year or I'd, I'd have to go in and look deeper into our QuickBooks. Um, for numbers, I need to bring up that report, actually. Uh, you know, and the, the thing too is I'm anticipating that we will be spending more, the more. Services.
So you listing two years worth of revenue for one year with a block rate budget?
It's, it's not two years worth of revenue. It's contracts that we have over. Some of them, like I said, are on calendar years. Some of them are on fiscal years. Um.
Well, obviously this is two years because he's asking twelve five.
He's got me thoroughly confused.
Tom, I just can't figure out here. I can't figure out here how you're getting so much money and, and spend, spending, only spending a hundred thousand and you still want us to kick in another sixteen. I'm having. You gotta help us out here, Jared. This is confusing.
True. Um, let me bring up that word. These are, when we say that we've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, this is money that is budgeted to us um, at various different times in funding and we don't always, we don't always have the ability to access it all um because of bandwidth. There's me, there's limited staff. And so sometimes we have to just focus our attention on specific Pacific projects. We have to pivot very quickly. Um, and so it's money that is, you know, there for us uh on technical assistant contracts. We don't always get to use it all. And when I say use it all, we're billing on billable hours and we provide deliverables. So I don't just get a lump sum of money in the bank. Um, I, I have to provide invoices, provide memos, provide a product, and then the money is approved by our, our clients and um the people who provide us with technical assistance. The request for the, you know, additional, you know, the sixteen thousand five hundred, I understand that we are asking for quite a large jump. Um, but we are looking to really expand our services and to really be assisting Hancock County and our municipalities in tackling some pretty pretty challenging issues. And it takes time and it takes resources. And I'm going to need more staff with me to help do that.
That's what I wanted you to expand on. I wanted to ask about some, just a little bit. Tell me what, where you're at staffing now and where you're trying to get to this next year.
So at staffing, I have two um retired planners who have agreed to come on as consultants part-time to assist me uh out of basically they felt bad for me uh because I was so busy and they said, no, we'll come help you out. I have an interview today at eleven with a potential candidate, and then I have another interview next week. Um, one of our challenges is, you know, to me, I think Hancock County is great, but I'm a dad. I have kids, you know, I like rural America. I'm from Washington County, so it's kind of a good fit for me. It, it is hard to often get people. Um, and so we have been trying to hire for quite a while. Uh, but we face the challenges that I think everybody else faces is it's really hard to get people uh and get them to stay.
Luckily, luck. You're going to pay for this additional staff? If you're spending all your, are you spending all of your uh income and resources annually? I mean, is uh, I still, I still am thoroughly confused as to why you're listing quarter of a million dollars in, in revenue and only a hundred thousand in expenditures and asking us for sixteen thousand?
Well, the, the, the staff salary, we would be starting out um based on their experiences between forty to fifty thousand dollars, including uh benefits where we are part of the main municipal.
And how are you going to pay for that? How are you going to pay for that?
How do we pay for those?
Asking for more money in the future from state and county or uh how are you going to pay for those people? Is that coming out of this extra hundred and fifty thousand you're listing here today?
That would be coming out of there. We have enough work to one, maintain positive cash flow and two, to justify onboarding extra staff. So if you put in, you know, their salary plus benefits plus mine, that two hundred and fifty thousand is not going to, that, that would cover two people, our operations and, you know, the benefits and salaries that go along with having uh professional staff. And we, we offer a competitive package because we want good people and the best to come work in Hancock County. Um, so my hope is that we will get a planner to come help me. Um, or that two hundred and fifty thousand, um, we will not be able to draw down on all of it because there's one of me. Um, and I haven't taken a day, I've taken maybe a couple hours off in the past year. Uh, and it's hockey season. I really want to get on the ice a bit more. Um, so, you know, with extra staff, um, that two hundred and fifty thousand is, you know, just, i- i- it's, it's not going to be a major profit or some type of major surplus.
Yeah, take a little break here.
Is, is current, what I, what I'm assessing here, Jared, is what you're saying is his current operating budget number he gave you does not include the additional staff that he's looking to get the revenue that's listed here.
Yes, they have people.
Is that, is that accurate or is that not accurate, Jared?
That is accurate. The current operating budget is based just on me.
It should have reflected that, just so you know in the future, that should balance to avoid this type of scenario, but you will have to explain the increase as well, though.
So how long have you been getting local membership? You, you list thirty-four thousand five hundred in local membership dues. How long have you been, been receiving those? Did you get those in twenty?
So in two thousand and twenty, F Y twenty-one, we received about um sixteen to eighteen thousand in membership dues. And many of the towns said, you know, we really would have liked to join H C P C. However, we asked for membership dues already past their budget season. And so this year.
And how much did you get in municipal contracts?
Uh, for municipal contracts with all of our comprehensive plans, I would say we are well over, we're probably well over a hundred thousand dollars in comprehensive.
Okay, so if I look at the raw number here, county and state contributions pretty much take care of your present operating budget within a hundred bucks. So the membership dues and municipal contracts is money that you're salting away for new hires. Is that correct?
No, we, we don't, we don't operate like that. We can only bill, you know, every month. And so I, I don't, it's, we're a unique operation and a unique organization in that, you know, that is money that we have in contracts. We have to do the work to get that money. We don't just have a big lump sum in our.
This isn't, this isn't real revenue. It's just potential revenue if you meet a criteria that you're probably unable to meet right now without staff. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's probably more accurate, that H C P C operates on a fund budget and these contracts are for work that may some of it yet to be done. And we've really have tried to staff up and it's been difficult. We've interviewed and almost had someone come and they, they get another offer in Southern Maine and they're gone. Um, but my understanding is that these sources, some of them are, are uh contracts that we will be paid when we do the work, but the work wasn't all done by June thirtieth. I, I, I don't believe, we reorganized with about a hundred thousand insurance that, you know, the bonding that resulted after Sherry Walsh was arrested and incarcerated. That, that amount is still there, but we have contracts for additional work. So maybe this reporting really reflects some of what we're doing now in this fiscal year.
Okay, so can I ask a question? You, 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 so you've gotten fifteen thousand. That would be twenty percent. Yeah, so you, you've got me thoroughly, thoroughly confused. All right, so as I understand this, what you're asking for, you made a statement that you don't have the staffing to do the projects that represent that two hundred, that, whatever that dollar amount. That makes sense to me. Okay, so now what, the reason you're asking, you're asking for startup funds basically to, to staff up so you can do these projects. So my question is, why are you coming to the, why are you coming to the county for those startup funds instead of the people who are actually that you're actually providing the deliverables to? Do you understand what I'm, do you understand my point?
I, I believe most of the funds that will pay for new staff or will come from those contracts. I think the county's role, and it's been invaluable in the past, is helping us when we have grants that we need to match. We need local funds uh to contribute to those, those activities. Uh, so as we assist towns sometimes, yeah. So the, the um, but historically, H C P's, uh, A C P's operating budget has been much, much larger than it is now because we had three or four staffers and we also have pass-through funds in our budget, funds that are allocated to projects. We don't get the money, but we administer the projects. Um.
This has been an unfortunate conversation because in frustration, I think more than anything, John, it just suggests to give him fifteen. And I think that's like desperation, but we don't, we don't understand you. We don't understand your funding mechanism here. We don't understand these numbers. And it's like, just give him something and tell him to go away. And that, that's no way to, you know, to, to support the department seventeen. And I don't blame John's frustration because I had the same one. And I don't know if it's at all possible. But I tell you, what I'd like to do is I would like to fund a certain amount, fifty percent payable now, or when, you know, when the, at the start of the, of the.
We generally do it quarterly, just.
Um.
We generally do, we do it quarterly.
So we, we deliver the first quarter and the second quarter, and if by the third quarter, they haven't hired anybody, they haven't incurred these extra costs, we withhold the second half. I don't know if we can do that or not, but uh, uh, right now, on these raw figures, the state and the county is supporting their full operation. And they've got.
Well, one of his statements was they provide deliverables. You know, and, and I get that, but what are the deliverables we're getting for this?
Well, the thing is, is that, that Jared is doing the work himself. He has padded that ninety-eight thousand dollar budget, annual budget. So the money he's getting for contracts is going into the business. It's not going to him. He doesn't get an additional. I guess he doesn't get an additional for doing contracts. He's getting a certain amount for being the CEO and then he gets additional for, for contracts and that would be different. But if he isn't, if he's, if he's doing the work now based upon the salary that he's getting, then the money he's charging for contracts is going in, back into the treasury, building that up. And if that's the case, why are we increasing our contribution when they're actually building a, a treasury based upon deliverables? So.
I'm just totally confused at how this.
I am too. John, do you get it?
I mean, to me, I think it's, I think I only get it and then uh, their income's only going to be based on how much they uh they can perform. They don't have enough staff to create the uh income they has listed.
Which if, if he didn't provide one service between the state and the county, we paid the operating expenses. So the costs, our cost isn't determined by the amount of contracts they have or whether or not they get membership dues. And so I suspect there's an increase in the operating cost because this is the twenty-one, ninety-eight to twenty-one number. I suspect ninety, ninety, uh, twenty-two would be six figures, but nevertheless. In desperation, I would agree to fifteen thousand dollars for twenty-two. You sticking with that, John? Yeah. John's sticking with that, Paul.
I guess I'm going to agree, but again, I'm not sure what we're buying.
I'm not either. I'm telling you, John and Jared. Just some.
Yeah, Jim.
No, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jim. You, you think I didn't even. Jim and Jared, if you understand that frustration, another year, we've got to have a presentation that doesn't leave us so bewildered. Because I'm not going to sit here in desperation and pick a number out of the air next year and agree to it. If I'm sitting here this confused and unsure of exactly what we're paying for. So by general consensus, gentlemen, we're going to submit at this time, we're going to submit fifteen thousand to B A C as a recommendation for the Hancock County Planning, okay?
And, and my frustration is, you know, where this is money that's being paid for by municipalities you know, to pay their assessment. God, how can I, I can't answer it. They ask me questions. I can't answer them straight face here. That's frustrating. I mean, what are they buying for fifteen thousand dollars? Like, so far, I, I, I got a, you know, hazardous waste. Here you go.
Well, in my opinion, you're paying for the re-establishment of the planning commission out of ruins, pretty much. So to me, they've done a great job building that up and increasing confidence in the communities and it's part of the county's role to, in my opinion, to help finance them. Um, that could be the entire role, obviously, by their budget or not. So we are contributing a part.
And so are the communities.
Yeah, so are the committees, so.
Yeah. Okay, so by general consensus, it's fifteen grand. We've got to move on. Thank you, gentlemen, for your involvement.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we will follow up with some better financials, I guess, the kinds that you can understand. I apologize that the, I think the revenue figure is stating funds that have been promised for work to be delivered and we're not all spending twenty-twenty-one. That's the confusion.
Thank you, Jim. I, I trust you'll come through with that.
Yep.
Um, I'm going to go now to they haven't even on the list, Rebecca.
Um, they, they are.
Where are they?
Um, next up is three up from the bottom.
I have town contracts next to three.
Oh, oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. I'm looking at the wrong one. I'm sorry. Let's go back to our five and seventeen list, and I'm now going to ask next step. And now we'll put the other one. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's me.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning for being, uh, next step had an eight thousand nine hundred and thirty dollar appropriation in twenty-one. They were asking for nine thousand, a seventy dollar increase in twenty-two. My personal opinion, that's reasonable. I think they play a valuable role in the community. Gentlemen, are you, by general consensus, can we agree to the nine thousand?
Yes.
Yes. Next step, thank you for staying with us. We're sorry we wasted your time hanging around. We, we, we agree and send to the Budget Advisory Committee your request for nine thousand, okay?
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you for staying with us. Uh, Rebecca, anybody else that you want us to go to instantly?
Uh, I haven't received any.
Okay, then we're going to go back to special children's friends who didn't ask for an increase.
Hi, I'm right here.
Yes, good morning. Thank you for staying, thank you for staying with us. Gentlemen, any discussion on the fifty-three hundred requests from special children's friends? John has none, Paul has none, I have none. By general consensus, ma'am, we're going to send to the, the B A C a request on your behalf of fifty-three hundred dollars, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for staying with us.
Appreciate it.
Gentlemen, looking at the University of Maine extension, they have not asked for an increase of sixty-seven thousand two hundred over, over twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we do have a statutory obligation for a portion of their budget. That's still an area I don't think we even want to get into. But anyways, and I can tell you that uh, you that, uh, we know what the extension does. They're, they're local, they're, you know, they're very valuable and so on. Is there any discussion with regards to their ask of, of the same amount as last year? John? Paul? I have none. So we're going to send to the BAC on behalf of the Extension Office, a request of sixty-seven thousand two hundred. Soil and water district, no increase, twenty thousand. I can tell you that I've worked with them off and on on a couple of projects over the years, I'm very impressed with the, the work they've done. One of them was stream crossing that Jim was talking about, uh, constructing a bridge. Is there any discussion on soil and water conservation of twenty thousand? John? Paul? Yeah. And I have none. We're going to send to the BAC, by general consensus, a request on behalf of soil and water for twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, thanks for staying with us this morning.
Thank you.
So Hancock County Volunteer Firefighters, I think is the only one left. I have said, gentlemen, that this is the closest thing we have really to a county agency. In fact, they used to be in the county budget, but because they didn't quite fit the criteria, they were taken out. But this is truly a countywide organization providing a very valuable service and, uh, we cut them from twenty to twenty-one by five, five hundred dollars by mistake, but they're now asking for that back. So is there any discussion about their ask for party four? John says no. Paul says no, I said take no. We will send to the BAC a recommendation for party four thousand for Hancock County Volunteer Fire Association. Gentlemen, anything else with regards to, uh, Department seventeen? Hearing none. EMA, Emergency Management, good morning, Andy.
Good morning.
I think this is really just a reaffirmative, uh, reaffirmation of your budget that we had proposed last time, is that correct?
I would request a PSO, yes.
You would request what?
I said I would request it then.
Yeah, okay, so, uh, nothing has changed and so, gentlemen, do you have any comments concerning questions, reference the EMA request? Paul has none. John is still studying. Okay, I'm all set. Andy, thanks for coming up, we're going to send along your, your ask to the BAC.
I very appreciate it.
Thank you. Sheriff, good morning.
Good morning.
I don't think you're gonna get out of this easy.
I was gonna say, I'm good with what we proposed, so I'm gonna say a quick vote.
They lost my energy for these people, for you.
We'll move on, but I, I guess if you wanna be that way, we'll, we'll do what you want.
Let's talk about your revenues. I'm in chat. Give us a refresher. Scott Atkins, fifty thousand dollar transfer.
That was the agreement on vehicles. Yeah.
So, so last, this year, this year, we agreed to transfer from where?
From community benefits.
Into this account to cover the cost of cruises.
In order, yes, yeah. To keep it a hundred thousand if the SO needed, if the sheriff needed to have additional cruises and, and you approved, then fifty thousand would come in.
To help, to help offset the tax levy.
Yeah.
So when I look at, um, vehicles this year, and the only reason I'm doing this, because that's where the money was from, is that's a substantial increase from a hundred to a hundred and eighty-five thousand vehicles. So we're taking a double hit here, taking an eighty-five thousand dollar increase and we don't have fifty thousand reserves. So, uh, just bringing it, gentlemen, that's a point to consider that, uh, the loss of revenue in the tran, reserve transfers and the increase in the sheriff's ask, makes for a substantial increase in the tax liability of this, so... But I am a firm believer in it. We, I don't wanna see us tap, tapping, uh, community benefits funds every year to, to satisfy our budget, so if they don't run out, then we're nothing, we're gonna, anyways. So with regards to the rest of the, uh, revenues, they remain the same, so we can accept those, gentlemen. Moving on to expenditures. Do we have anything here? I was looking for anything beyond normal increases, either by policy or by contract, and the one would be an, uh, additional patrolman. Scott Key, correct?
That is correct.
That is good. Okay, give us your pitch.
I, I believe you received some figures that I sent, I apologize, I forget it, in late yesterday, documenting the increases of, of complaints from two thousand and fifteen up until this year. And as you can see, they, since that time, they've increased by over a thousand and the projected, uh, numbers for this year, they're gonna be up substantially. You know, with the addition of the airport, uh, with the addition of two-thirds coverage of the county, with the addition of more time in Tremont for the town contract and satisfying the current town contracts that we have, with, with the other outside, I'll, I'll call it outside details that we have. And we contract, uh, we technically don't have a contract, we agree with some of the towns, uh, for dedicated patrol, uh, for traffic. So with all of that, uh, the folks that have been working shorthanded this year, you know, they're worn out. We just need to have another person to help us fill in that schedule, uh, to cover everything that we have requested. You know, it, it may come to the point that if we can't, uh, get people to cover the day-to-day contr, uh, day-to-day complaints, that we may have to say no to a town, say, no, I'm sorry, we, we just don't have people enough to, um, to come down and run radar for four hours in your town. But I hate to do that, A, because the community depends on us. Uh, obviously, we've had conversations in the past about the state picking up the slack. We know that hasn't happened and will not happen in the future, uh, for several reasons. And quite honestly, it makes, it, it's a good supplemental income of overtime for the patrolmen that take those details. They, uh, they completely pay for themselves. We bill the actual cost to the town, the contracts for those traffic details or other details, but, you know, it's gonna come to the point where they're worn out and they say, you know, it's good money, but I can't, I just can't do it anymore. So we're asking for another position, it would be at step twelve C, uh, and we'll look to see who we can find.
Now, you have on the budget, uh, had on the agenda today, a request to advertise for, for a deputy, for, for, for this open position. Is that, is that reference the personnel issue that we're facing? Okay.
Yeah, that's an open position.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
So, is it maybe in the middle of September, it'd be lucky if you bring somebody in December, or if you...
Yeah, I think, I think we all know, not just in law enforcement, whatever you're doing for a business or whatever your organization is finding, people that are qualified, people certainly in law enforcement that are trustworthy and meet standards, it's difficult.
I don't know how to approach this, but my point is gonna be is that, even if we approve an additional deputy, the sheriff may be very fortunate to find two people within two months of each other qualified to take these positions. So we could fund this and he still is left with the inability...
Well, we're funding, that's, this isn't a budget, so this starts...
The position he's asking for...
Clear, that's an open position.
That's a position that's presently funded in both these budgets, this year's budget and next. He's asking for an addition to that. So we're really talking about filling potentially vacant position in twenty-two and an additional new position. Again, my point is, is that considering, and I think the sheriff's been incredibly fortunate in getting the candidates he got, and, and I think even that new hires that need both the academy, I think that they're, uh, good people. I think we're very fortunate, even though they weren't academy trained yet, but I, I think they're gonna pan out well. And I'm saying, but that well is drying up in a hurry. And so I don't know what to do, whether, because it's almost like we have, I don't call it wasted, when the dedicated funds the sheriff can't spend because he can't fill a position, uh, if he doesn't find this second person, if we do appropriate full spec, uh, the full twelve months, and I'm wondering if perhaps we phase that in. So we say to the sheriff, we'll, we'll fund another deputy by July of twenty-two and...
We've done that before, Commissioner, and I, I was gonna suggest that, but I had to look around, see if they had anything to throw at me before I did, so...
That's in, no way.
Well, he's, he's thinking up the old man part of these empty shifts are down at the airport, you know, and that's not what a chief deputy or a sheriff should be doing. We shouldn't be down there doing security down at the airport.
We cannot go through another summer like we just went through, and...
But if you're gonna go through, you're gonna go through it if you don't find the right people, and you're not gonna hire the wrong people, so I mean...
I, I, I agree with the Commissioner. My, and I understand your theory, I, I get all that, but what my concern is, in today's climate, if I hire, if I find a candidate in January, he's gonna be gone by July. So that helps to understand, you know.
Well, and, and I haven't finished my presentation, and I made the same one last year, but here I go, doing it again. I'm suggesting that we budget, gentlemen, for July to December in twenty-two for full-time deputy. If the sheriff comes to us February first and says, geez, you're gonna believe it, I got a guy, we'll find the money to fund that position from the first of February to, to June thirtieth, just like we found the money to buy those cruises this year.
The other piece that goes along with that, by, by statute and policies, that person has got to have a training period, a, you know, with, with an officer that's been here for three hundred and sixty hours, is that what, yes, three hundred and sixty hours. So if you take July and then you add another three hundred and sixty, you know, you, you add those other nine weeks on top of that, you're, you're talking the other end of the summer. I, I hear what you're saying.
And what this is, we're talking about the tax levy here, that's what I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about giving you an additional deputy to help you and whatnot, at the same time, I'm trying to minimize the, the impact of the tax levy. And so I'm saying that we, in the budget, we put six months for that deputy, but with the caveat that if you come to us early in the year, we'll find funds to hire that guy when he's ready.
That's, that's my, that's my suggestion to the Commissioners.
Here's why I don't like that, is, and, and it's coming from a lack of experience. My feeling is that, I hope we are try, I, I see the shortage, you made the case for the shortage, and I think we all agree. If we have a candidate, there's no problem. You know, we, there's no coming back. If we don't have a candidate, then that money that didn't get spent is just gonna carry over the next year.
Excuse me, Paul, but the problem with that is, is that we have, we have increased the tax levy, even though we didn't spend the money. And at some point, we're going to look at the percentage increase in this total budget and we're going to ask ourselves, can we live with that? Can we live with that? And so if we can keep that down, then with, because...
Yeah, I, I get where, I, I...
We're both saying the same thing. What I'm saying is, is that we're not going to give him money for this deputy every year out of this, out of us contingency funds, but just to get the guy on board until July first, if he can find somebody.
If I can understand this, and I'll put it in a way, and please don't be offended, that we're gonna be fine July on, but if I find somebody to come to you in the middle of January, that's your problem to find the money, is that correct?
We, I, we, as a group, we're saying to you, we will find the funds to hire that guy in January. That way, we don't impact the tax levy in the budget for six months that, that he didn't have some.
Yeah, I hear you.
Because even though it's false, if it's salted away, it's too late regarding the impact of the tax levy.
Oh, what does that? That, this sheet that you gave us, that, I had to show one point three, that's with this amount in there.
Correct.
Okay, if you reduce that amount...
Be around thirty-five thousand total.
Okay.
Well, then health insurance, so, oh, maybe another fifteen, ten, fifteen then.
Is this a simple spreadsheet? If you lower that amount, what does it do?
So if you lowered that by forty-five thousand?
Yeah, not much, but...
Yeah, that's...
I'll go there, yeah.
Well, at some point today, we're gonna be looking at forty-five here.
Yeah, well, you're gonna be doing...
Four hundred here is four, four hundred there is gonna do it. If we're looking for...
Now, that, that, because again, I'm agreeing, that doesn't...
Ten point six.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so...
Three quarters, maybe three quarters of one.
Yeah, so, uh, this additional doesn't create problems down the rest of the budget, like an extra cruiser or anything like that? This is just...
Right.
Right, okay.
But you say, you say that over a period of time, there was gonna have to be an adjusting factor there to his equipment and whatnot. Right now, he says, I can hire a guy, I've got, I've got equipment for him right now. I mean, starting in January, he can find equipment for this guy. But at some point, every guy he hires is going to have a, some kind of an impact on his equipment needs. And so he isn't asking for a new cruiser just because he needs a new guy, as I understand.
Right.
So, but someday...
I'll be back.
Well, I mean, someday, this going from nineteen fall to twenty fall is gonna have a, some kind of, of impact on...
So what your proposal does is lower that levy this year, uh, next year's gotta catch up. I, I guess I'm sort of ambivalent, I just, what I don't like is that we're, we're creating a potential hardship in the beginning of a budget cycle, not in the middle or the end of it. That's, that, that's my own problem.
Historically, gentlemen, you have a department that's at large, there's usually room to absorb that. So say, if it was, so the maximum effect would be January first, the sheriff brings you, wants to hire somebody, you've got that full amount for January through June. But I don't think that's gonna happen, but as it, as it goes forward, it, it reduces.
So, so what would we, because we're, we're the folks that have to, boggles my mind, but anyways, we're the folks that have to say, okay, Sheriff, you can go out and hire somebody, or you can go out and advertise to hire somebody. He's gonna come to us, you know, right, January first and say, oh, I wanna advertise to fill this position that we talked about. So we, we, he advertises. If he doesn't get, he doesn't get a candidate till midstream, then we're covered. If he gets a candidate earlier than that, then we have to have a discussion. We ham, ham, I, I just don't know enough about the operation to know...
Well, I think essentially what you can do is, is essentially, at some point, because it's not in the budget line, if it's earlier than, than the July happy scenario, you're probably looking at a possible over expenditure in the budget line. And as long as you're consciously aware of that and prove it, then that's how that, that's how that happens.
And then depending upon this total budget at the end of the year, we may have to kick in the amount of, of that, that period between the time he hired and June thirtieth from a, from a, a source outside, a, a source of CBA. That's where we got the, that's where we got the cruising money from, you know?
Well, and his budget was, uh, just off from memory, that might not be accurate here, was trending that he hasn't spent all of it anyways.
Correct.
So... Is this a dangerous, I'm trying to decide whether this is a dangerous move or not. I, I don't think it is?
No, it's not, no, it's not a danger that I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at you and seeing that that's, no, it's not a danger, especially when you have options as a sheriff pointed out with CB. Cause, cause you gotta also figure in that, you know, from my financial point of view is that it's not just the sheriff's budget, but it's the overall, the entire budget at the end. If the entire budget at the end is, is, would you say, is this thirty-five, forty? If the entire budget at the end is, is, would you say, is this $35,000, $40,000 in the negative? That's up to you whether or not you wanna cover that. You don't have to cover that, especially with a positive fund balance. Because that's where all of this flows, is to an undesigned, you haven't told her where to go yet. So sure, no, this is not, no, it's actually, I think, from our, from a budgeting point of view, a compromise and wiser than if you're going to do it, then, you know, not doing it all, of course, but, yeah, yeah, it's a happy medium.
Is that how, I mean, the sheriff's, it doesn't sound like we're hamstringing you.
Well, no, you folks have made the statement that if by some miracle I find somebody, let's say January, February, whatever day, that will work and find the money.
Yeah, because, okay, that makes sense. It just boggles my mind that he's gotta come back.
If he's $5,000 over on his, on that line where you authorize this, then, and you tell them, well, you need to take that out of the gash, you need to start cutting, you need to, which is not the history of this board. I'm sure the sheriff is probably gonna remind you that.
And Scott's gonna remind us, if Scott Kane comes back here the first of February and says, I pulled a rabbit out of a hat, found the guy. I wanna hire him immediately. Scott Kane, Scott Atkins is gonna remind us that we didn't budget that position until July 1st. And so we need to watch the overdraft in that line and remind us of our agreement that we would hire this guy when, when and if he could find somebody prior to July 1st and cover, cover the cost. And so, and that's one of the proposals. So, my gentleman consensus, can we agree to that? And if so, Scott Atkins, can you?
Yeah, I'm just gonna have to do a round figure here.
Yeah, I think rounds are all you need.
Just boggles my mind that we dictate how many people, we dictate his budget and, and the number of people.
Well, it's pretty much the same, really, because I can't, I can't hire big.
Yeah, it just seems like we're just getting used to this one.
Once we get through Department of Candy, Commissioner, I think the rest of it will go much easier. There's really not a lot of changes in the departments that I have. But then obviously the biggest one, there's more, more items in there.
But if we're going further, this is one of the nuances. So are you agreeing to put that to be the number, or would you rather present the BAC with your full?
Uh, I think in simplicity that they're gonna need to know that, in fairness to them and to the public, is that we've made an agreement that you're going to fund it in this year's budget. No.
It's, it only confuses the matter. It's not we wanna deceive them or keep it from them or not, but basically they're going to, they're going to support a number for you. And what you do with that really is the operational part of it. So, I mean, you can explain to them, we're gonna hire somebody sometime between January and July 1st and anyways.
I'm comfortable with presenting it that way. Because I can think of one person that's on that board that's gonna ask the question, why?
Go ahead. And if you think that information is necessary and they want that, fine, go ahead. I just say it could complicate matters and whatnot. The other problem is, and I'll say this right out loud, is that I don't want BAC telling us how to spend our CBA.
Oh, I hear that.
So the answer, the question Scott Atkins is asking is that, of course, anytime we can have a department ask and a commissioner agree that it's the same number, it just reduces the.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's the fair way to do that. And then if in fact the miracle happens and I find someone, I will come back and remind you of the agreement that we read on today.
I can feel that we're not gonna forget that.
I got a feeling I'm not gonna let you forget it.
And I think what we're doing is we're budgeting to reality versus miracles. The miracle happens, then we deal with it.
Yeah, a budget is a game plan.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a wise game plan.
That's my first, my first statement is that I'd be damn surprised if you could find somebody July 1st. I'd be pleasantly surprised if you could. But, uh, okay, here's, here's the thing, Scott. I'm not sure today that we can tell you specifically what these numbers are because they all change.
That's right.
But based upon, we're gonna take a rough half position and remove that from the regular salary line. And then he's gonna adjust several other lines and whatnot and come up with a number that corresponds to that.
I fully understand that.
And he's going to change our ask to mirror that number.
I totally understand.
Okay, so we're in agreement, at least at this point, that we're gonna hire an additional patrol deputy sometime in, in '22 and somehow pay for it.
Okay.
Well, that doesn't sound like budgeting.
Boy, that was, that was a definite baby, wasn't it?
Well, so anticipate him, the sheriff coming in January and asking the same question that he's asking later, right? That's how I understand.
The next thing he's gonna ask us is to get our consent to advertise for this new position.
Yeah, in January, yeah.
No, he's gonna be here November, December. He's gonna start that process as soon as he can. It's gonna take months, weeks, if not months, to find somebody.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm, in other words, after budget's finalized is the point you're making.
And that puts a little squeeze on him.
Because that position is already funded in this one.
Excuse me, in this year's budget. The position he's asking for today is already funded.
Yeah, that's.
That's our issue. So sometime, I suspect it's gonna be after BAC, he'll come back to us and ask us for the mission cabinet.
I think it's on the agenda, isn't it?
You want it?
I think that's on today's.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I'm good. Let's go down then to his ask on overtime, which has been increased by, I don't know.
65.
500.
65, excuse me.
Yeah. Now.
We're gonna go over this year.
But year-to-date, is, five-year year-to-date is, is 63,000. So they had a bad year, but four of those, four, of those four before that were well below.
But remember, since it's really, it's not reflected there, you had some significant contractual increases. Was this gonna be the second year?
Second of three.
Yeah. And so, you know, 7%, 7%, that's, that's a lot.
And we, from now, until the end of the year, you know, we're talking about the holiday section as well. So we're at 69%.
Sure, you're in the same schools, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So my only thing is, so not to, I can't feel like this last year, you've come, you know, before us, like, yeah, we need more help on the airport, and we gave it to you. I mean, I feel like, you know, we see the need and we tell us, like, yeah, okay, cover that and get you more people. But so I guess I'm wondering, if we keep adding more, trying to add more people to cover the shifts at the airport and everything else, why do I, why is it, why is the overtime increasing? Like, we're trying to stop the overtime by increasing by like, say, hiring another person.
The biggest answer is because if you have more people, you have more people who have the ability to take time off and the time off by contract, by contract, we have to offer that to the full-time people first, and that's those overtime shifts. So if you take an overtime shift at 10 hours and, you know, time and a half is $45, $50 an hour, you know, you lap it up pretty quickly.
But, Commissioner, so that, what Scott said is accurate, why I asked for the increase, but 75% of that overtime money is expended on extended shifts. And there's no way after our shifts go home at night or before they come out in the morning. There's just no way to plan for that, whether you brought in four more people. It just, those are downtimes, that we need additional staff, and that's where, that's where the funding goes. So you're not gonna see any reduction. And as far as the airport goes, with all due respect, we didn't ask for those positions. That was on the county side.
I know, I know, it's a big problem, so.
Felt that all the way up here.
I do hear you.
Sometimes the truth holds out flat in the face.
I feel like I'm trying to, I feel like I, I try to, you know, make sure that we're supporting you in what you, in your, in your, like.
Yeah, that one needs to be a two-way street. We do need to work on that somehow, but yeah.
I understand.
Well, and my guess is that, you know, because of everything that's gone on, that's probably a big number this year. You know, hopefully it's not, but we don't know that till after.
You know, I always said when I was, when I was patrolling that I got called out early in the morning than I did at night. And I went over shift more at night than I did in the morning. So because the morning, the day shift, you know, you always get that alarm, car dear accident, you know, vehicle off the road at 4:01. So we have to call somebody out, you know, you have to pay them the overtime in their regular shift. And then at night is when you get into the gunshot complaints, the domestics and most other complaints, which traditionally, many times, you have to carry over on your shift.
Scott Atkins, I'm having a problem understanding why 22 budget, post-22 budget is $250,000 more than 21. Where is that money? This new deputy.
Oh, I just took out, I was gonna say, I only got 245, but yeah.
Well, like, 100, $1,743 in '21 is a budget.
You get $100,000 in the 70 series.
That's right.
You get $130,000 in, in the payroll we just talked about.
Wait a minute, um, 103, what?
$13447, the difference between, in the personnel services alone. And then both you added to is close to about $142,000 between now and the payroll costs. But those are, those are the two big drivers right there.
So Mr. Chair, what we're here trying to explain is that in the, at the very bottom of the budget, the different, the 2,200, to.
Back to 1.7.
1.742.
And I'm trying to find quarter of a million dollars in here. I just quick figure and I can't, I can't find it.
Well, personnel services.
I know, but it's, it's 103,000 for additional deputy and the, the increase is regular. The total was only 137 for the entire personal services, 137, 177.
47.
177 in, in personal services and employee cost. Then you go down through and you have 15 here, 15 there. Actually been a 7,000 reduction and you just can't find 50 grand. I just don't see what it is.
Vehicle, no.
Yeah.
Vehicle.
There's 85 there. Oh, there's 85 there.
There's an increase there.
Yeah.
And 50 meters in the running.
Yeah, 96 and 12 on the.
There it is right there.
So.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, but, uh, nevertheless, and we don't know what the true total cost will be for 2022, given the increase in personnel and. But he, the sheriff's department has never come. It's never come anywhere near $2 million. I mean, the five-year average is, is one and a half. We know that's going to be significantly more than his five-year average or not. But my point being is that if we left the 75 in overtime, at the 68.5 it is now. One thing about it, the sheriffs know that we're gonna pay overtime no matter what it is. It's gonna have to happen. We're just gonna, we're just gonna have to overrun that account. And if we're fortunate enough not to have to exceed the 68.5, we haven't budgeted for money we didn't need and.
You know, what, these figures that we have are obviously our best guess in that, and we want our budget to finish in line. And if we don't fund some of these accounts to the amount where we feel that it's going to go, it makes us look like poor managers. And I don't really want that hanging on there.
You never overrun your budget?
Nope.
You've always spent?
Absolutely.
Some years substantially. And so I'm saying that, first of all, that gives you a lot of room to force us to cut you some slack if it ever happens. So I'm just wondering if, if Scott Kane is not placed, is not, his whole philosophy is, is to make sure there's enough idiots and this never happens. And that causes that to be inflated over what he actually needs.
But not substantialism.
Well, it's half a million dollars in, in, in the five-year average. Now, you can't use that because we've given him more people and we know it's gonna be substantially more than that. But I'm just saying that Scott, in the years he's been sheriff, he's never overrun his budget. That tells me that there is a, there's a built-in security in that budget and whatnot against that, that perhaps we could consider in a bad year. And right now, gentlemen, with a 11% increase in that budget, this is not a good year. We're gonna have to, we got all done today, we're gonna have to bond some serious money in. Unfortunately, when you have a department with a $2 million budget, that's where some serious money lies. So if we can, if Scott Kane can leave the room today, understanding what our proposed budget is and why we didn't fund perhaps the increase in overtime, at least he understands that. As opposed to some point saying, no, we gotta cut this thing by 5%. Where's it gonna come from? Because a department head with $2 million budget is going to take a bigger hit than a department with, with the $500,000 budget.
They said, so.
I'm, I'm suggesting we leave overtime where it is. Scott knows we're going to pay overtime no matter what it is.
In other words, where it is budgeted or where it is actually?
2021. In other words, we don't increase it over 20.
So where?
He's asking for $6,500 increase. We said, no, let's leave it where it is.
At 68.5.
68.5. I'm hoping he, he doesn't need more than that. 22, if he does, it's what it is. Gentlemen, we can do this now as we're going through, or we can go back later when we, when we need to find.
No, okay, so, so let's go with that for a second. Your, this actuals is a, actual, that's an estimate, you know, annualized, right? So trending right now, you wanna be able to tell about where we are, right? And that's what that, that's what your estimate is based on that trend.
Right now, it's slightly under, but it's pointed out could be, you know, second half could be different. Second half includes more of the summer season. Second half includes a lot of holidays coming up.
Well, basically, it's, it's six months double. Isn't that what that generally is?
Yes, in this case, yeah.
There's no, there's no adjustments made for the Scott kids. We got some holidays coming up. It's basically, I think, six months into June, we need to double it. That's our anticipated actual, which.
Has that worked out? Well, we could tell.
It depends on how you look at it because, for example, if he had $185,000 in cruises and he spent that all in the first six months, and you look at his total budget, it skews the second half. Because you're not gonna double that again because he doesn't have another $185,000. So that's only good to a certain extent.
Yeah, like in 20s, first year.
Yeah, it's a guy. It's a guy. It's just a, it's just, I don't know.
Again, because the other fact you did is 7%, so his increase is about nine and a half percent in that line. You know, so I think it would be justified to at least go 7% because he's, he's close. And I would say that probably the 510 would hit that 68.5 for this year's number. More likely than not, if I'm anticipating, even though that doesn't show that, but for the reasons I just gave, he could hit that. However, you have the other option, as the sheriff pointed out, of, you know, try to take a look and roll on that dice and it may.
7% increase, is that what you're saying in overtime? What would that amount to? Are you saying increasing the budget by some, by overtime account by 7% instead of a 9?
That's significant. I mean.
Right. At least that's what it always is, but, I mean, the 6,500 is two of the greatest things, but 73 and 3. Yeah, I'm just throwing out options, that's all.
Well, I'd like to leave it right where it is. And that's, John's good with that. So we're gonna leave that where it is at 68.5.
Okay, so we have that question again from the sheriff.
You wanna, you wanna take your 75 to BAC? Okay, so the sheriff's ask would be 75. Comp time buyout, now that should be, you should be able to keep that pretty close, can't you?
No, not really.
Still subjective?
It is because they have different options on which way to take it.
And trends don't tell you anything to help you. And trends don't tell you anything to help you to get
Well, that's kind of where this number falls, is within those trends, where we were anticipating it going.
Because I find it interesting that your five-year budget is twenty-five, your five-year actual is thirty-five.
That line's never been fully
Yeah, never been fully funded. Well, this is a good year to do it, it's not a good year, but I mean, well, at some point, we might as well get honest with ourselves anyways. And we could have had this conversation next year.
If you take the raw data, twenty-five is your budget, thirty-five is your actual, what are you gonna be, your real number is thirty. So I can't, I can't disagree on thirty. John can either, Paul?
No, I agree.
Yeah. Let's move down by, the employee cost will be adjusted based upon the action we took above. Travel, travel's gonna, go ahead, Scott.
No, we got to go in the academy, and we've had training, because COVID, we haven't been able to send people through. We, you know, just to cite one example, we promoted sergeant, that sergeant's gonna have to go have some good life supervisor training and those types of things. So that's what the increase is.
Boy, I hope we don't find ourselves right back in the same
Oh, I know, I hear you, I hear you, there's been some good practices around that have been available and
So the point is, how does we work to, you know, to get back to normal, do we have a repeat? I'm, I don't have a problem with something, but you can do it. Do you have, your two new rookies are going at the same time, leave December?
Yeah, well, no, they're going in January, and that's our process there, that's the slowest part of the year, instead of taking one then, then one in the middle of summer. So we'll take the bike all at once, you know, they've had their FTO, we're using it as a special assignment, so they're handling complaints now, it's just a matter of getting that, that blessing through the academy for the eighteen weeks.
And that's eighteen?
Eighteen.
Change of four and a half months.
That is a long time.
But gets them back here by the summer though.
It does.
Yep, good. So, gentlemen, nothing changes till you get down to gas, gasoline. Only went up five thousand, say only.
We're averaging three hundred and fifty thousand miles plus a year.
And I understand there's no reason the gas is gonna go down for another You have a problem, gentlemen, fifty thousand for gas? Moving on. IT is taking up some of the slack on sheriff's computers, glad to see that.
Thank you for that.
Uh, gonna cut to replace some vests this year?
Nine.
Yep. And those have a
Five years.
Five, and what happens is they don't support them after that, or they just basically warn out, or
They don't stand by.
They won't warranty you.
They won't warranty you. There are thousands a piece, huh?
I hear you.
Yep. Sitting here, knowing I had a deputy that, that saved his life one day.
Absolutely.
It's, you know, you can't, you can't shortchange this. I'm gonna suggest that we leave that, it is a thousand dollar increase, but we have been salving money away every year, so, before this, so, yep. Now, gentlemen, why, Scott, I never understood why some increases or decreases were highlighted in yellow and others were
Um, sometimes it's like one, I saw it was the second, and commissioners, why the second thousand was, I don't know, to be honest. Generally, it's a, it's a change or there's a note to it or a conversation.
Okay, so we gotta go down through, and I see nothing changes. Computer support. That went down again, thanks to IT, I guess.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good.
We'll see, actually, that one, I would generally highly just give the department credit, looking at the, that's the discussion.
So let's go down to the reserve accounts. The sheriff is asking for a ten thousand dollar increase in the reserve account that buys radios, two-way radios, right?
Yeah, you know, and that project, we had a conversation, had a meeting with Brown's Communication, and they've sent us a proposal to replace portables, to replace the radios in the cruises, and to do the upgrades to the repeaters that we have. And I didn't think it was appropriate to bring that up today, but we'll get that to you, because that was one of the items that when we had original discussions on what we could use COVID money for, that we had thought that would be a great. You know, we're talking two hundred thousand dollars plus for this project, and to, to explain it better, I've asked Rick, and he'll come up and explain to you the logic and the reasoning behind changing to radios that are more compatible, that are digital instead of the ones that we have, because the ones that we have, some of them now aren't compatible to upgrade.
So is he giving you a price?
I have it downstairs, I didn't bring it today, because I didn't think it was appropriate to bring it today, but I do, he's giving me a two-phase proposal, one to replace the radios, et cetera, there will have to be some upgrades to the NSCC to handle the digital radios instead of the current radios that we have.
That's gonna be six figures, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that's why I said that if we could use that for, for COVID money, to me, would be a great, that would benefit everyone else.
So if I could quickly, because this is brand-new information, I watched a, a video presentation of my counterparts presenting to the county commissioners. And I can send you that video if you want, and one thing that really jumped out at me was that it appears communications are now about ninety-five percent assured that
It talks about
they would qualify, well, but again, I think the hesitancy, it does, and that's what we need to do, is we need to tie that. So such things as such as communicating, you know, the importance of communicating the, the situation that officers, you know, through dispatch or through the officers, and I'm sure radios must be included in that, well, you know, the COVID exposure, the COVID repercussions, the, you know, COVID status, again, that buzzword, keep applying that. And I think the questions were really answered, was another county went, went directly and got an answer, and, and basically, it's, it appears that the new the, the new, the new momentum seems to be that, that county's gonna start looking at that.
Was that, that wasn't the SCADA question, was it, was it? Got that answer, got that question?
No, Oxford.
Oxford, the reason I ask is, is that SCADA was just replacing their entire radio system.
I think that's
Transmitters and all.
Yeah, through our, yeah, yeah.
And I was, I was very encouraged to see other counties and whatnot, thinking that that was appropriate use of the funds, because
Right.
It's all gonna go to digital at some point, and we have forty thousand dollars now, and we're requesting twenty, which is a ten thousand dollar increase this year. You know, at ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars a year, we're never gonna live long enough to have money in that reserve account. So if we can access that money that we have for COVID and put this towards it, you know, I think, Scott, if
if COVID money will span out this, then I don't think it will speak anything yet.
Right, but I'm saying, we've already got forty thousand dollars in there.
I know, I, I wish I had a crystal ball that said yes, you know, come management next year, whatnot, we'll spend three hundred thousand dollars for all new equipment, the sheriff's department, we don't need this twenty thousand, because there's twenty thousand, we don't have to add to the budget, I hear that.
So but you still, the reserve account, so, because what the COVID money would allow us to do is start over, okay, on, you know, depreciating a new asset and replacements. So if we knew what the, you said it's a two hundred thousand dollar project?
Plus.
Okay, let's call it a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So ten thousand dollars a year wouldn't even fund it there.
You'd never get there.
You'd never get there, I mean, the useful life of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment is probably, what, five years, ten years?
Seven years tops, probably.
Okay, so seven years. Yeah, so, so what's that math? I'm just trying to see if
A lot.
Okay, so two hundred I'm just trying to see.
I think your game plan really depends on how confident you are in, in approaching the process of using our lines. I mean, that, that's what I guess is, I'm, I'm saying, that, that's the tide that is seen to shift.
Well, so, so the reason I'm asking this question, okay, let's say we, let's say we did that. Okay, the, the money, no problem using the funds to do that. Go spend, we go, we renew everything. The useful life of, you know, that's like seven years is a good accounting number.
Right.
That's thirty-five thousand, thirty-six thousand dollars a year.
That's if we had to replace the entire thing, though. So the replacement cost, you're right, but the replacement cost may not be two hundred, in other words, you it may last longer, but you may have, you may have to put in a new transmitter, you know, or you may have to put in, you know, but closer than, yeah.
Okay, so, so the twenty thousand dollars even
Is still
is still a reasonable number and, and somewhat of an conservative number.
It might be a reasonable number under ordinary situations and whatnot, but when I saw that list that you sent out to us on the conversation in the eight, in the counties that were going to depend upon our money for communications, there's a lot of, of, what am I, was it confidence in these counties that that money's appropriate?
Yes.
And I'll tell you, that's given me enough encouragement to tell the sheriff to hell with the twenty thousand, we're not gonna give you twenty thousand, we're gonna take our money and give you a quarter of a million and upgrade your whole system. The risk in doing that is that that suddenly fails, it does not become thing. You've lost the ability to build this account by twenty thousand, now you have forty thousand in catastrophic, there is between now and twenty twenty-three budget preparation. But I'd like to not fund this, use this as an opportunity to save a few dollars and whatnot. And the, the good news is, is that we're going to start today looking at our money to, you know, to now, I know that's, that's, that's a, you know, well, yeah. Well, it's not, it's, it's a bigger, it's a less, it's a smaller if today than it was thirty days ago. I don't, I wouldn't have done this thirty days ago, but I'm telling you, you haven't seen the list, but when you see the confidence that other counties have, that communications is an appropriate use of our money, then I'm, I'm saying that that gives me a lot of confidence that we can use it, that's what we should do.
Yeah, and, but, yes, I understand exactly what you're saying, but my other point is that we don't have any reserves for much of anything. And it always seems when we come to a crisis, we have these lengthy conversations, where are we gonna do? At some point, or my belief in budgeting, is that you need to have some sort of, some sort of reserves, you have them as commissioners, and you have the ability to access them. We don't, we don't have those abilities, so we are always coming begging with our hand and our tin cup up or whatever, trying to find these things. And I think Paul's experience in Bahaba can show that Bahaba does a hell of a job of building reserve accounts to address these unforeseen things that happen. And I believe that we as a county should be doing some of these things, you know, we're, you know, you're talking about the sheriff's budget being two million dollars. You know, what probably the biggest operation, one of the biggest operations, chairman of county, so it takes money to do business on that scale.
But Scott, two things, first of all, you've been very, very important, this board and whatnot has accommodated you on those, on those needs. Second of all, you have forty thousand dollars presently in a reserve account for this purpose, that you could use for emergencies. You have, you have a high expectation now that we're gonna seriously consider replacing your entire system, which means you're not gonna need forty thousand, because you have a new system with a warranty and everything else and whatnot. So I understand in theory, building up reserves for some of these whatnot, I'm talking about specifically this one at a time when we're trying to prepare a budget for next year, and I can tell you that the budget is gonna have to be cut somewhere, because you can't send eleven thousand, eleven cent increase.
Would it be appropriate for the next meeting, would that give time, give the board time to research and see if they can get a better confident response that that's going to be a, a project that we can use that money on? And then I'll put on the agenda and have Rick and Jim come up and explain it to you and show you copies of the proposal with two face
I can tell you, that's a given, because this, we are going to want to look into that.
And, and then
And what I would rather do is look into that, and before December fifteenth, find out if that wasn't gonna fly, then add twenty thousand to your budget, and to put twenty thousand and now find that it's gonna fly, so.
This is the way I feel, or, this is a philosophical, I think, difference, but I'm tickled to death that we're probably, probably going to be able to use our monies for, for this. With that said, I think this is a chance for this county to build up a CIP account to, to at least start accounting for replacements, so that we're not faced with this down the road, so that's, that's my hesitancy in taking this out. I know there's a balance of forty thousand dollars, and that could be worth in there, but we do have to we should, this county should look at this opportunity to, to get its act together, and, and that's not the right word, but I think everybody knows what I'm saying, is we we need to set up a CIP account, so that as he needs to replace and upgrade this system, it's funded through the CIP account. So we're not having this discussion all the time. I'm gonna make the same argument for vehicles when we get to the vehicles, because it, it's just crazy that the numbers are doing this, and that's what, that's why we're at eleven percent is because of a lot of this. So I'm really hesitant to cut that twenty thousand, I'd love to take it out of there. And, and, and maybe we could for a year, because there's a balance in there.
That's what I wanted to point out to you, that's, that's your one year to reestablish and figure into, that's what that balance also does for you. And I will, and this, this was created, I don't want to create that, and with that, we'll take care of that.
Yes.
The eleven point three percent, whatever increases the last two years have been a result of basically doing nothing several years in, so
It's caught up.
It, it has caught up with us, but you do, you do need to try and reduce as much as you can this year, and I think when we get to the conversation about the vehicles, I I think that would be a I think that would be a better, one that you're, you're going to have to make some move somewhere else in order to accommodate what should be done to vehicles.
Okay, now, now, in this discussion, and in reading that document, I don't think it precludes us for, for setting up reserve accounts for some of the things that we spend the money on, is that
In that document, no.
We can't do that.
You can't take a few million.
Oh, and I'm, no, no.
Money not spent two years ago. Paul, the thing is, though, we talked specifically about each reserve account. Unlike cruises, which have an acceptable end date, hundred and twenty-five thousand, you better be thinking about getting rid of them and replacing them. Radios do not have that, they're not like this in five years, radios have, you know, some of these could go to hell in three years, and some of them could last ten. So in other words, my point is, is that building up an account that gives us a quarter of a million dollars ten years down the road so we can replace our radio system is necessary with radios, because we're going to replace some as they go, as they need to be replaced, and so you're not going to replace these mass agains.
I don't know, that's, that, you've made a great case for a reserve account, for a CIP account, because that way, when when two of them break this year, he's got a balance in there, buy those two, doesn't have to come here and say, I have my radio.
And he has that, he has that, he has forty thousand dollars in there to replace
Well, if he's got a, if he doesn't have a digital radio system, he's gonna have to face that music.
Yes, yes.
They're determining that for years.
I'm, I'm good with taking it out, the budget, and obviously, next year, but they back in to subdue somehow, whether it's ten or twenty, we'll see. But if the committees were committed to get an answer on, you said we are money for it, which I think for three years, hard. That's gonna buy us some time for at least one year, we know this year's a bad budget because of some adjustments that we've done, pay and everything, so, but we said
Okay, so we're going to remove the twenty thousand dollars for radios. And my discussion, Scott, you know, the good news is that we're going to we're gonna see if Apple will give you, replace your entire system.
But, and following up on what Paul said, I've said this for years, that, you know, you dealt with it for how many years? Commissioner of vehicles, vehicles seem to be the biggest thorn in the side in these budgets. Every year, and I've watched it every year since I've been here, and watched Commissioner Park come down and pull his hair out, because couldn't get the cars that he, that he needed. So, so we So we got, I guess you want more, you've got to see more millions. But, but the bottom line is, I suggested for several years, if we get a number and we agree on, okay, this is how much money we're gonna give you in your budget for Cruises. If I need four this year, can buy four, great. If I only need three, we carry that money over some next year. I've said that for several years.
Well, and I wanna, I think that that needs to carry over to radios and all this other stuff. You know, so that we do this.
And it does, and we need some help, and our should be the perfect.
Opportunity to do that. That's what, that's all I'm saying is, I want to be able to use that to.
Yeah, to reset.
To reset, because that's what we need.
Charles Olfway was on our Budget Advisory Committee and saying, she got the BAC for several years and whatnot to understand, we budget two and a half cars a year, patrol vehicles, a third of a civil vehicle every year, and one jail van every year. And that went for four or five years, and you, you talk about flying through, it was easy, everybody, you know? But then it went to hell.
You had, last I remember was you had two this year, three next year. That's when we had twelve people, well, now we have twenty-three.
That's what we bought, though, we, we budgeted two and a half, you bought three one year and two the next.
Exactly.
Exactly, great. And that's just what the sheriff needs with Cruises, and we'll have that discussion.
And, and I think you'll remember, the first year after that agreement, the board changed that. There was, so, anyways.
Okay, so we're gonna take twenty thousand out of the radio reserve account?
So same question, when you go to BAC.
I think I'll leave it in there to make my case, but certainly understand where you're coming from.
You know, this is a philosophical thing, is it, and I have no experience with the BAC. Wouldn't it be a lot cleaner when we agree? Because I think we are in agreement here with moving forward, and this board's gonna stay for what we have another two, two years. I, I, I don't know everybody's cycle, but I, I, I like a united front.
If you feel less more comfortable and.
No, no, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to sell it to you, I'm just saying that it's.
You see, you.
I think we all see that we gotta be, we're going in the same direction.
Put this in there, and you make a case for them to put it in there and whatnot. And we still wanna go back, by agreement, even with you, we wanna go back to a new system. We don't need the twenty thousand and whatnot. We now have to take a position contrary to the BAC's advice, we tried not to do that.
So then I'll, then I'll ask you the same question I asked you back up there. We're gonna have an agreement between us, we take that twenty thousand dollars out if we find out that this COVID money is, we can use, that we're gonna take a portion of that and fund that project that Brown's Communications had to take.
Well, it may not be Brown's Communications, but we're, we're going to replace your radios. Right. If AIP can use communication, that's gonna be a priority as far as, as what we're looking into for our.
So I'm gonna tell you what my priority is for our funds. My priority for our funds is funding things that this county needs and straight, it's not for redistribution, it's for, this is an opportunity for us to get up the stuff, set up a, you know, CIP accounts and whatever, so that we're doing this for.
So then if you think that'll be.
I don't know, I hope I have, I, I think, I think we all agree on that. You know, I, I don't know that, but that's my guess, just from hearing both of you speak. But I, I, I want to look at this as an opportunity, not a way for us to give away a bunch of money.
Okay. Question Phil, is you gonna, you gonna keep your twenty thousand?
No, I'll take it out.
Okay, we have an agreement. Okay, uh, copy of purchase, I think I've taken out.
Did last year?
I, for some reason, I'm thinking there was no ask because you bought one.
This is just, I mean, just put that. Just sat and put, yeah, okay, so that's reasonable, he's just standing to build it, an account to buy another one. Uh, officer buyout didn't change?
So that's gonna get us in danger so close to that amount where we could buy on Academy, someone ran out of the Academy. And I know that you have.
Paul, you understand what that is?
No.
Uh, you hire a deputy to spend the Academy, whatnot, first five years, you prorate back to the Academy, or back to the agency to hire them.
The, the agency that paid for it.
Right.
So it's that's at forty thousand dollars, if I hire somebody within the first year that someone else has sent to the Academy, I have to pay that at forty thousand dollars, it gets down by eight dollars every year, telling you it's down to zero.
And your comment.
That's there.
That's there. Well, the amount's fuzzy, but anyways. So I don't understand your thing, if we raised the eighteen, you still only have twenty-four. What, what's that, what are you saying? Is that what we had in that account? It's only, it's only sixty-two hundred dollars, there should be eighteen, I believe.
I think it wasn't.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, so we've got twenty-four in there now.
That caused some confusion prior here, so I didn't transfer.
It gets us to the forty thousand.
Right.
Uh, is eighteen more going in?
Yes.
So that's twenty-two, eighteen more.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, two fifty, so you're.
Twenty-four. So and the total amount we need for Brian.
For Academy, forty thousand.
And the thing I want to dip on dime is, Scott, but why can't we reduce that to sixteen?
Sixty thousand?
Yeah, that gives you the forty thousand dollars.
And I'll ask you for the other two thousand if I need it.
You won't need it, though. I mean, that'll, that'll.
How much if I get in that reserve account?
You'll have a total of forty-two if we give you eighteen, and I'm forty-two thousand. I'm just saying, reduce it to sixteen, give you forty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, and if you have to pay forty, you'll have a six hundred dollar balance.
Yep.
And we'll find it. Scott?
There's actually an increase in that, it's not forty thousand anymore. It's, it's up six percent this year.
Oh.
That's why that number.
That's another twenty-four, that's, that puts your rate in the ball back. Oh, Christ.
Yeah, plus the wind, the wind staff, we, we cut this.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, you know, we were trying to keep this line, do you remember, when we started doing this, so.
Eighteen, eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
The only other argument to be made against that is, is that that is the worst case scenario. In which you hire a guy with two years on, I mean, you're talking probably less than forty thousand to, to buy him.
I think the most we've paid is twenty-four. I think we paid twenty-four, and we recoup some of that because the person left.
But here we are, giving him, giving him probably the consent to advertise for two deputies. And.
Yeah, that doesn't represent one person, that represents the whole.
So, you know, and it does happen, one of the sheriffs had three people in the last academy that graduated, they walked off the stage and went to work for all the agencies. Well, thank you very much, you know, when I was at the Academy a hundred years ago, I had people, there were six or eight people actively making out applications at the time to go somewhere else because there was this, this statute was not in effect.
Jimmy Willis said, I, I made more money by.
He does.
Training people who sell.
Sure.
All right, let's, how many, while, while we're on this, how many, how big is your department?
From myself down to civil, it's twenty-three.
Okay, so, so it's not unreasonable that, that department has, we're not talking.
Per person? No, are we, are we staying with the eighteen commission, or are we going to six?
I'm staying with eighteen.
Okay.
Even if, even if we had to only buy one person at forty-two, if we had to buy two people at forty-two, we're, we're way out.
Yeah.
So I mean, no, I, I can't see, now, I'm gonna tell you this. If, between now and December fifteenth, when we finalize that budget, if whatnot, things look a lot rosier about what you need, then you might get a car here, you know what I'm saying? When you know what you've got. So anyways, today it's eighteen, I guess you're right, you know? Cruises Vegas. Let's, Cruises, how many?
How many Cruisers?
How many, well, no, how many, how many, how many of your employees have vehicles assigned?
All twenty-three.
No, isn't the sheriff's secretary twenty-three?
Oh, no, I, when he said how many people, I'm talking deputies, I'm not talking people in the administration, I'm not talking.
Yeah, okay, so take the civil out of there, they get their own.
Oh, gosh. Well, there's twenty-three deputies, and then there's Michelle, Mary Ann.
No, 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 back up, yeah. Take the civil deputy out of there because he's got his own. You got twenty-two people that sign vehicles?
Yeah. Where's my list? It should be on that list.
So you have twenty-two vehicles? Yes, now they got twenty-six, or they're, they're.
With the coaches bears, we get twenty-five.
Twenty-five with fans, but they have twenty-two people that have vehicles assigned to them. They imply we love them, yeah.
So, so twenty-five vehicles, how many, how many, uh, you, you like to get rid of one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty thousand, aren't you?
He has sold one of the hundred and thirty thousand miles on since he's been in the office.
We just did.
Yeah, well, what's happened, yeah, those, we carried them all a long, long time. What, what's happened is that the price of used vehicles, if you can keep them under a hundred thousand or close to a hundred thousand, you see, the value of them is that much more to trade.
Okay, so how, what's the useful life of your vehicle?
A hundred thousand, I'm hoping to rotate them out.
Whoa, time already there.
And how many years?
Oh, time out, because we agreed to buy you Tahos, more money.
Yeah.
Better vehicle.
Yeah.
And there was an expectation that you would keep those another year and put a few more miles on because even with a hundred and twenty-five thousand on Tahoe, kept in good shape, is a good return on, on trade-in. And they're a better vehicle that will take a hundred and twenty-five, so.
Mine, when I traded mine, it had just under a hundred thousand miles on it, they were up to eighteen thousand five hundred.
And that's not ever down significantly with a hundred and twenty-five.
So, which question, Paul?
How many years you can have a vehicle?
We, they average between a patrolman or some motor vehicle averages between twenty and twenty-five thousand miles per year.
So four years.
Four years, it should go a hundred roughly, five years obviously, a hundred and twenty-five.
Thank you.
We should wait miles around three hundred and fifty thousand. So. Now, the nightmare about Cruisers this year is getting them. I spent the better part of three days in the last week trying to find vehicles because GM has shut down, they're not gonna take orders for new Tahos until July of next year for delivery in twenty twenty-three. So I've been trying to find something that happened to be around somewhere. And I talked to Leo, who originally got the bid for the Tahos here, he still hasn't gotten enough for Tahos in here. And he sold, he sold two or four, I spoke to him, I said, just hold on to those other two, if you have any.
Okay, so that means that we need to replace six vehicles, six and a quarter vehicles a year. Six. In theory, yes, but I, for example, I get four years out of his, so it's really four. Okay. Is the number.
How much did we pay just in Tahos this last year?
We paid a hundred and thirty-four thousand plus, we sold the other two pickups for twelve-five a piece. We paid a hundred and thirty-four, four, plus, yes, that's what we had.
Net.
That's what we paid for this year.
We paid for, but net, what, what's the net?
After the trade-in.
Well, we actually didn't trade them, we sold the pickup, so that showed as, as more revenue this year.
Okay, but what I'm trying to get is, you understand where I'm.
I do, yeah.
So is it fair to say that each veh, I don't care about the trade-in, each vehicle costs us thirty thousand?
They're gonna go up five percent, we were told that yesterday, from where they are.
Yeah, but, but the trade is gonna.
You're welcome. Forty. The cars are forty thousand dollars a piece, is what we paid for them, and it's nine thousand dollars.
So.
Outfit.
Oh, I forgot about the outfit, okay, but you don't carry, like, Bahaber, they outfitted, the outfit would go on two vehicles.
Or the one.
And they have.
Okay.
Some of the stuff we have, we do have to rotate because we've done just exactly what you said.
So, so I, I saw, so the forty thousand, so that's fifty thousand per vehicle. But the outfit, let's say we make go two, so that's fifty-five per vehicle, net, right?
No, you're, you're way. If we pay one thirty-four for four this year, I mean, that's, that's just a tad much.
Thirty.
That's thirty, sorry, or something like that, Paul. Listen, as soon as they get all Tahos, start replacing the Tahoe, the Tahoe, that's gonna reduce the equipment cost. And if we buy new radios for those out of this added money, that's gonna reduce the cost directly. So the problem, the problem I'm having, Scott, is that you're taking equipment cost out of the cruiser line. I really wish you could separate that out and talk about the vehicle and the vehicle lines, and then you show what you need for equipment and analyze something.
We, I sent you a document that has the bare bones of what, what it costs, nine thousand, something like that. That should have been something that you sent yesterday.
I don't remember nine thousand from the other vehicles.
Would you, so you send it that way to that makes a difference?
Yeah, that's, I accept that.
So what's the?
Sorry, I wasn't.
No, 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 I thought you guys were discussing.
We, we, we weren't, yeah, go ahead.
So basically, each vehicle's fifty thousand dollars a year. That's what, that's what a vehicle costs to get.
Get on the road, and that's even, that's considering you'd recycle some stuff, it's about fifty thousand. Okay, so that's two hundred thousand dollars a year vehicles.
You're not recycling much if you, if you're taking the raw vehicle, and it costs fifty thousand dollars.
We're not right now, because every time a manufacturer changes their design, nothing fits.
You know, so we, we pay five hundred dollars for consoles, and it's good for two or three years, and we trade, that console doesn't transfer, you know, let's spend traditions and forwards, every, every manufacturer, they change them and alter them a little bit, so some of the equipment, which is, most of that stuff is expensive, uh, you can't transfer.
So here's why I'm asking that question, I'm trying to decide whether we're going backwards here or forward. And it sounds like that a hundred and eighty, I, I'm sorry to say it, but it sounds like that a hundred and eighty-five thousand is the true cost that should be moving forward in the CIP, but not this average.
So, Commissioner, I, I figured that with two hundred thousand dollars, four vehicles, we're gonna get rid of three at five thousand a piece, which loaded to one eighty-five instead of two hundred. That's why you see one eighty-five instead of two hundred.
I was hoping the number was in between, but my math is not lying.
Well, because if you're showing sales or trade-ins as a revenue, you can't, you can't decrease that from your purchase.
Right, there's no money as far as revenues or sales as I'm anticipating.
Trade-in is no money, but there is on sales.
Yeah, but they're not in here. His revenues aren't.
No, it isn't, Paul.
So you're anticipating that you make four purchases, it's gonna be four trades, uh, there's gonna be trade-ins, no sales.
Yeah, but even if there were, he doesn't have any sales in this budget, so that isn't happening.
Sale is when you don't trade in, you sell out, just like those two white ones.
Yes, I, I agree, but.
What he's predicting is that they don't buy four and trade in everything, and there won't be anything to sell out. It'll all be trade-in, and that, that just reduces the actual cost of the purchase, right? Well, if you look at the bare numbers, twenty-two employees need Cruisers. Even if you back out, you know, Sheriff and Chief Deputy might put a few more miles on because they're not controlling.
Well, here's the counter.
But to, you know, it still comes out for four.
You know, and I, I haven't put the mileage on the shit because I haven't gone to the legislature in one of Augusta, you know, numerous times, I haven't gone to MSA meetings numerous times. So that's, my, my vehicle is almost thirty-nine thousand miles on it now, we bought it two years ago this month. I, I traditionally average two, twenty, twenty-five thousand, pad that too, because he, you know, he works when he's on call for a weekend, he works, and he's been, unfortunately, on more complaints or any complaints at all, they shouldn't have.
So, gentlemen, do you want to accept the one eighty-five that the sheriff has asked for for Cruisers for twenty, two thousand twenty-two?
I don't want to, but I think we have to.
Yeah.
When we put the beds, I mean, to be, I mean. When we put the beds out, we'll, they come with that.
Yeah, yeah.
So you'll pay for one eighty-five.
That's what it is.
And the other, the other way you take, you analyze it too, is if, if the Astro account, which whatever's left over gets transferred, if the Astro account starts reaching a certain number, you may look at, make an adjustment to that.
Yeah.
But that's, that's a pretty solid number if we start to do what you want to do, so that you have the money avoids this conversation, long conversation every year.
Well, and the proof of the pudding is, there's only fifteen hundred bucks in there.
Exactly, so there's nothing to start with to reduce that if, no.
Yeah, so that's why this is a perfect time to have this conversation, and like.
It's the perfect time. It's the perfect time, but I'm still, I would still like to know what the true cost was after four vehicles are bought and equipped. Because, I mean, I'm just.
I'm sure the pad, I'm sure the pad's, uh, pretty close in its estimates, but. You know, I asked him to get those figures on, and we didn't submit them up here because we do move some stuff around, but if you have to replace everything from radar, camera, uh, all of that stuff, you're close to twenty-three thousand dollars.
And you're probably having, Scott, if you're throwing away serviceable equipment.
You know.
Well, you better not. As well, I just, for all the years we replaced equipment, one cruiser to another cruiser to another cruiser, whatnot, and all of a sudden we're seeing brand new equipment in every cruiser we buy, I'm saying to myself.
That, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that would give you the number that you're asking for, what it would cost. All of a sudden, you had to staff from Strats, you had to buy a cruiser and equipment with everything that's in it. That's what, the additional cost of twenty-three thousand, the numbers you had there that we submitted to you, uh, bare bones, and they were what, ninety, ninety-one hundred or something like that? I'd get, I'd have to filter through my file here.
Yeah, and I assure you, Commissioner, we're not throwing away anybody. Light cars that we're disposing of now, I bought them, you were sheriff, and those were on Chevy. I don't even know what they were, they've been gone from vehicle, 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 they just outlasted their life, there's a cost, we have to replace them. We don't have a CIP, so this is very rough.
You know, those, those cameras are six grand a piece.
Okay, and gentlemen, we have got to move on here, so are we okay with one eighty?
Yeah, that number makes sense.
One eighty-five is the number today. Firearm Reserve didn't change it, sixty-five hundred, anything problem with that, you want?
May I ask one question? I know you don't want me to, but I'm going to add, we had one line, and we changed the overtime line, other than that, we agreed on everything. To make it smooth and make it go, let's, let's leave that at sixty-eight, because I had asked to leave it at seventy-five thousand, the overtime. And you were recommended sixty-eight-five, let's change that to the sixty-eight-five, so everything we have in there is the same.
No, but you're asking.
I'm, I'm asking to make, to take back my request for seventy-five, with the assurance from you folks that you'll pay the overtime, if it does exceed that. That way, every line that we have, we're agreeing.
Very good, thank you very much, that makes it easier for us, and so on, so are we okay now with the sheriff's budget? Uh, there's going to be some adjustments to that number, so I don't know what that number is.
And no, there's no questions, but it's just an opportune time to, this number, where it is, is because we are having to play catch-up in a lot of places, and this vehicle one is a perfect example.
There you go, and, and really, we just, a couple of years, as I've heard, you know, zeros, ones, and twos, and ones, and.
Yeah, you know, Commissioner Park made a great statement, we've had, we've had, been very fortunate for the last four or five people we hired downstairs. And a big part of that is because of work the commissioners did by raising their salary, so we were not competitive with everybody else.
Okay, Scott, I'm going to give you an opportunity to sit down and take a break, okay? You don't have to, sit down. Thank you.
Wow, man, I got sent to the corner of the school before, but.
Sonny Sprague, thank you for joining us this morning, can you hear us? You can turn your. Are you muted? Monica, help, help Sonny unmute, we are.
Can you read lips, Sonny? Actually, you can hear us, we can't hear you.
Gentlemen, I'm, I'm going to have to move to, uh.
There you go, go ahead.
There you go.
There, Sonny, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
You're looking well, I hope you're, hope you're doing well, thank you for joining us, we're going to move to your issue of, uh, the tax assessment credit for Swans Island for the calendar year two thousand twenty-two. Now, this year, that was fifteen thousand dollars, Sonny, do you have a recommendation for two thousand twenty-two?
Recommend the same as last year.
Okay, gentlemen, we have a recommendation, a request from Swans Island for a fifteen thousand dollar tax assessment credit because they're an island. Under that, you know what criteria is. Yeah, this was what we discussed a few months ago.
And the law requires us to, to renegotiate this assessment every year, which is what we're doing for two thousand twenty-two. Sonny has asked for fifteen, what is your pleasure?
Motion.
Motion made, seconded, to assert, to give Swans Island a fifteen thousand dollar tax assessment credit for two thousand twenty-two. Any further discussion? Hearing the law in favor of the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. It's affirmative, the motion carries, Sonny, we're going to give you a fifteen thousand dollar tax assessment credit for two thousand twenty-two, okay?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sorry you had to wait all morning for that, but, uh, you, you can see what we're up against, you know what budgeting is. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Sonny.
Take care. All right.
Good for you guys.
Yep, now, gentlemen, we're going to take a, a few minutes recess, we'll be in recess. Thank you.
There.
Will call us back into session. Looking at the agenda, um, jail cap, that's not in a book, that was in.
Uh, yeah, it should be.
Jail cap?
Twenty-four.
Two twenty, we went right to thirty.
Really?
It's in my, one. Well, irregardless, it's just a number, right?
It is, yeah.
Okay, I don't care, don't do it, maybe.
It's a four percent increase.
It's a hundred and eleven, right?
Yeah, it's a hundred and eleven.
Yeah.
Is it there?
Yeah.
I've heard.
This is what it.
Oh.
I thought, there you go.
Right?
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a twenty-four.
I think I did, that's, that's the other.
You got it, Commissioner? I, I've got it down, thank you. Yep.
So what is that? That's the county's contribution to running the jail, the rest is supposed to be made up by the state, and then rightfully sure on the, okay. You know, I was thinking the other day, and I know that's not always a good thing to have, but in our situation, traditionally, we can, where we get in big trouble is medical costs. And if the state will pay the medical costs, the inmates that we have, we'll reclaim, that would make a huge difference, I mean, how much did we just get pounded recently for?
We had a hundred, somewhat thousand, just two months.
In two months? Medical costs, you know, I, I don't know if you'd ever sell that to the legislature or nothing, or, or not, but to me, that would help a lot of jails, certainly would make a difference for us.
So.
They've tried this, Florida, there's a, one of their senators down there is trying to, trying to force this bill that they would remain, if they're on main care, it would continue, because right now, if you commit on main care, thirty days, that main care goes away, and the county is responsible, but um, and they're trying to.
Really?
If they're trying to get this passed, so it would, it would continue through, because then we, we know you're in for ninety days, or a year, nine months, whatever, you're after trials and everything, we, you're released, now we jump through hoops trying to get you back, that we have councilsmen trying to get them back on medicare overnight, because now they might last for thirty days, and they're released to have medicare when they're out, because there's removed from it thirty days after incarceration.
That's why you buy the cow and you get the milk for nothing, though, because the state knows that we're going to have to cut their health costs if they don't pay for it, so.
I, I didn't. But that would make a huge difference for us.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's been the case for a long time. Yep.
And, and that cost, or where does that?
As you have made medical, I mean, you just.
We don't have that budget, all we have is the cap, uh. Now, you want, you want to understand the cap, though, that we have, we can't raise any more money than a certain amount. Because legislature has limited how much we can raise, so, and right now, that.
So that's two million forty-four, that's what that number is, okay, so when we incur more costs, where does that come from?
State, the state, in MSA work, for a year and a half, to get to an agreement where, where the state would pick up eighty percent of the cost, up to twenty-three million dollars statewide. And it, and it was split up based on your average daily population, in other words, we got so much per day, per head of people that we had in that jail, and obviously, the Cumberland's and the Vanosses, and then they got more than we did. But that was after just months and months and months of working and negotiations, came up with that. That went to the legislature to vote on, and then COVID hit. Put the brakes on, so that is a bill that's supposed to be considered an emergency bill and taken up in January of two thousand twenty-two.
So, so what this cap, that is the maximum amount of money we can raise through our assessment?
By statute.
By statute, okay, so any money, because we can incur more costs than you've just outlined.
Oh, what happens right now is that they take our cap and the state's, and the state's contribution to the jail, that constitutes ten percent budget, so, do you hear that? Yeah?
Oh, you've got to pass.
I just gave you the jail, the actual jail budget.
And, and that's, the actual jail budget for two thousand twenty-two is two million eight hundred forty-eight thousand fifteen dollars, that's deceptive. And I'll tell you why it's deceptive, is because, um, we have original numbers, we, we don't know what you're going to negotiate for a contract with corrections, that's up, intended this, uh, this year, December, that contract ends, and we have to negotiate.
Labor.
Correct, for corrections officers, this budget is based on four percent increase for them, but I'm suspecting that you're going to, because of what we did with patrol and what we did with dispatch, that you're going to have to, um, increase that higher than four percent, but this budget is based on four percent, and it balances theoretically. If we had put the seven percent in there, we were like seventy-eight thousand dollars or seventy-nine thousand dollars, based on what you paid, or what the agreements were for dispatch and patrol, the increases. So I say that's the budget, and it is, in the sense of right now, what today, if the increase was four percent next year, that's what the budget is, but when you negotiate a new contract, um, I suspect it's going to be higher than that, so that's, that's why I say that's kind of a deceptive, kind of a deceptive figure, that's based on right now.
So in short numbers, if we raise two million forty-four thousand, the state's going to kick in another eight hundred and forty-four thousand.
Just based on those numbers, but last year, we got five, five hundred and sixty thousand.
Yeah, the state's actually, the projection is five sixty, they're going to give us this year. And the rest of it is our revenue line that we had over, uh, Federal Board, Federal Transports.
Okay, so you're making up the difference, yeah, you're making up the difference, so cap in the state and revenue equals eight hundreds, I mean, two million eight hundred forty-eight thousand, right?
Based on a four percent increase next year, in other words, if this was the second year of the contract, we would be budgeting for four percent, and that's what I had to me do this year.
Yeah, but if we put seven percent in, you're going to have to cut it somewhere else, because two million eight hundred forty-eight thousand is the magic number. That's all you got to spend, you've got to figure out how to live with it, right? Right, okay, you understand that? In other words, we're not going to look at his need and see whether or not we want to fund it. We're going to tell him how much money he's got, and he's going to have to figure out how to live with it. And that's, that's no, that's no way to run.
It's not, and it's impossible, I mean, we, we, the jail budget is just cut your eyes and throw it out, I mean, that's awful to say that.
Listen, the state's wrestling with this. Listen, the state's wrestled with this, I mean, they started with border corrections and that was a complete disaster. And they're still screwing up with it. They just leave it alone, let the counties decide how much we want to spend, but you got like Maine municipal, up there whatnot, Champion, you know, holding the cost in county jails. It's, you know.
Because like, just let me start with main medical, we have a hundred and forty thousand, I believe, what we project is what we asked for. And this year, as of right now, actual is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, that's the main medical. So we're a hundred and thirty grand over our main medical.
And that, and that, where's that extra, come, those are real costs.
That's all we have to work on next year.
We just keep, we just keep trying to save money this year to think, you know, it's.
We're to begin this.
It's a young game, it's, it's, it's a difficult thing to stand on.
And see, his argument right there falls on deaf ears when you're talking to the state. And that's why if he could come back and we could decide exclusively how much money we're gonna get, give to jail and whatnot, we would be receptive to those arguments because they just make too much sense, you know?
What, what bothers my mind is i- if you have medical coverage that you no longer have it once you're in jail.
I have, the state knows that.
I've reached out to, I went right to the commissioner of.
DHHS.
DOC to try to get supplemental funding, they call it. They asked me for a number, I told them. They had a very poor conversation email brought, and then I'll said it, it stopped me.
Something after they give you your initial appropriation, you're asking for a different condition.
And it sounded like we was gonna get it, now it's, now I don't know where we are, it's kind of everything is stopped. It was like, they pacified me long enough and then all that, it just disappeared, so.
Okay, I don't want to cut this discussion off, I know it's very helpful, especially.
Well, and we're compelled, we are compelled to run this jail.
Yep, the pay, that's right, we gotta pay the actives.
And that was a problem, I had border corrections, they were compelled to pay the cost of running the jail and whatnot, and whatnot. We were compelled to pay for the cost of upkeeping it, but they wouldn't give us enough money to do that. And so we couldn't raise the money, but they would give us them. I don't want to cut off, but we're gonna lose Joe in here pretty soon and we've really got a couple more things to do, we gotta get there. So anyways, motion is ordered to accept the tax cap, is that correct, Scott?
Yep.
We have to approve that. Is that, now, is that an official motion or is that part of the budget?
At least it's by consensus, unless you want to vote particularly on that one.
No, th- this was your one question?
Yeah.
Okay, gentlemen, by general consensus, we've agreed to two million forty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars?
Yeah, right on course.
Okay, that's where we are. Then move that to.
Twelve, town contract? Town contracts?
Now, gentlemen, if, if the revenue amount. The revenue amount is identical to the expenditure amount, this is a done deal. Because what happens is this is, this account is completely paid for by the recipients of the services we provide under contract. So you got a five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and two dollar revenue line, you got five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and two expenditure line. And in theory, this is a wash, the recipients of the service are paying for it, it's not adding to the tax leg. But honestly, as long as it looks like that, why do we care how the sheriff spends it? As long as he.
We don't bill them unless they get serviced, so.
So, gentlemen.
Unless they get serviced.
By general consensus, can we agree to the contract, uh, budget?
Yes, it's just too bad he can't allocate more for it. In decision.
Let me see. Okay. Sir, gentlemen, by general consensus, we've agreed to the town contract budget. Civil process. Revenue's the same that it's been for many, many years, we're gonna fall woefully short because of COVID this year. But the legislature did pass a bill that we've been fighting for for a long time that, right now, we charge sixteen, by statute, we're allowed to charge sixteen dollars for paper plus mileage and some add-ons for, for copying and things like that. Basically, sixteen dollars for that, the state was only paying eight. We finally decided to fight that, MSA did. And the legislation passed, it's now forty dollars for everybody. State, uh, for DHHS papers and everything. It went through, uh, flying colors through the House and the Senate and it went to Finance and they passed it. And then someone put the brakes on it, saying the DHHS didn't budget for this kind of money, so we're gonna have to redo something, so. Is it still pending, legislature?
Still pending, so that'll be something that'll be taken up in January for next year. I suspect what they'll fight to do is cut the state down to a different amount and leave the fees.
But that's still substantial though, isn't it?
Absolutely, that's substantial.
So the worst case scenario was is they, they still give them a fifty percent break in their service fees. But the good news is, is that for the mass, uh, vast majority of your, your clients out there, you're gonna get more money, right?
About twenty-four dollars a paper?
So we can't afford to go up at all on our.
I would, based on the numbers, I sent you the numbers on what it has. We do get a fair amount of revenue from, from, uh, from, uh, mileage. But I, I would sense it will be, we don't know, we're now going to a fact, you know, they may drag it out until the law.
Is the, is the, uh, five-year actual is ninety-six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's the note, because of the last two years, it's really taken a hit.
Skewed, nevertheless, if we could ever get back up to, where we could get back up to six figures, right? Actually?
Yes.
And that's all we're budgeting?
The last five years, I've not seen it ever hitting the one fifteen.
No, but he's, he's saying that taking the new fees and applying it.
Right.
I just, I just feel like we can, it's safe enough to take a chance that that's, that line's going worse. It's a, that's a sixty percent increase, right?
Yeah, but i- it is, but the number is seventy thousand. So seventy thousand up to a hundred and fifteen, that's significant.
What's, what's, what's seventy thousand?
The estimated actual.
But that's COVID.
Yeah.
I checked it out for several months. I don't see seventy thousand, oh, actual sixty-nine, oh, sixty-one.
Sixty-nine, oh, sixty-one.
So you're saying, but even if we took the twenty-twenty's actual, which was eighty-two, and changed?
Partial COVID, yes.
Oh, partial COVID, yeah, that's true.
Geez.
I mean, I mean, it's three-quarter COVID. If you're thinking to raise it, if we don't, if we haven't made one fifteen, and say we go to one twenty-five, that's gonna make that look worse. It would look much better to stay at one fifteen and we surpass that and have a surplus, then we go to the end of it.
It looks better for you in managing your budget.
That's what I'm thinking.
But it doesn't look as good for us, who are trying to lower the tax levy. In other words, I'd rather see us overestimate your revenue and lower the tax levy than for you to underestimate your revenue and come out with a, with a surplus or looking better than you.
What are you charged now for? Uh, we charge sixteen and eight, sixteen for the general public, eight dollars for any state paper.
Okay, and you're.
You've got those numbers, I sent those to you. There, there's someone.
Yeah, so, and then they're, they were supposed to go up to forty?
Yes.
But they bought.
They did, it went through the legislature.
Okay, so let's, let's say they settle at thirty.
Well, I think they'll leave it at forty.
Oh, you do?
For, for John Q. Citizen, but I think what they want to do is change what the state wants to pay. They'll go back to fifty percent for the state, fifty, there's always fifty percent for the state with sixteen and eight, and they'll go with forty and twenty. That's still a substantial increase if they go from forty right to eight.
I'm saying that that's probably going to happen, it's gonna happen quick. Which will mean that the rates will apply for most of the, the two thousand twenty-two year. And I think that that gives us an opportunity to safely increase.
Legislature's gonna do that quick.
They're not, they're not gonna, this is, this is the, this, this is last year's session that's finishing up, so.
No.
I don't believe it's gonna be quick, but that's, I, I just don't see anything happening.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be June, July, August of next year.
Okay, so that's basically doubling, okay, let's call that doubling just safe. So what number are you doubling? What number would you double? I wouldn't double that hundred and fifteen.
I'm not, what I'm saying is that he thinks, I'm present, he scheduled, he could, he could, uh, raise a hundred and fifteen thousand. I'm saying that, and it's not doubled, it's a, it's a sixty percent. Nevertheless, even if you double it, if, you gotta, you gotta be raising a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
More.
Uh, up to a hundred and thirty.
Oh, okay.
So I'm saying that we, I think we should increase this to a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Scott said, I don't like that because if I can, it makes me look bad. You know, this discussion's not gonna go away, I'm gonna do remind us that, you know, you.
Even if I'm being selfish.
Your crystal ball is, was clear the moon.
Well, I'm, I'm being selfish, I'd rather have Nico come than you.
No, but, y- yes, sir, that hundred and fifteen.
Let's hit that first for a year, then we can go from there.
Well, the, I know that the, the five-year actual is, is somewhat skewed because it includes this year, right?
Mm-hmm.
Both the last, the last two years.
Two years, really.
Yeah, so, uh, using your, going to one thirty-five is, is very, very, very conservative.
In other words, you think it could be, if the case narrows, it could be a hundred and fifty thousand.
I think it could be two hundred thousand.
No, yeah, no.
Well, here's why it could, because let's use that ninety-six thousand, okay? And let's double it, remember, it's sixty percent, it's not double.
Oh, that's right.
So, so it could.
This is a hundred and ten percent.
Yeah. So, that.
Right here, I read the numbers. Two thousand seventeen, we served two thousand three hundred and twenty papers, now that's not broken down.
Yeah.
Just tell us the.
That's just.
Doing the math times, times sixteen, I did do math, it's just a total.
Well, two thousand seventeen, it's a hundred and twelve thousand eighty-five, two thousand eighteen, one ten, oh nine four. Two thousand nineteen, one oh eight, four thirty, that's why I said earlier, in the last five years, they haven't hit the one fifteen, never mind COVID.
Exactly. Even if we use, even if we use that figure, those figures.
It was a hundred thousand.
I said a hundred and ten percent of that is two hundred thousand, I mean, so.
What I'm hearing though is that hasn't been approved.
It's been, it's been voted through the legislature and it's gone to appropriations and they approved it. But someone put the brakes on and DHHS had fit, saying we did not budget for that beginning, for an increase at all, let alone one that larger.
Once they pass a DAHS and whatnot, the rest of them will fall.
Correct.
So, and, and they would.
Would you know before, would we know before we ended this process?
No. More until this legislature comes back in session in January.
Yeah, so, so this is what I'm proposing, I'm proposing, we're either gonna leave that one fifteen there or if we increase it, we've got to make a good stab at the increase and a conservative stab would be two hundred thousand.
Oh, 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 God, no.
No, no, think about it.
Well, no, but I will, because there's no funding to actually pay for it, I know it's in theory, but what I'm hearing is there's no money to pay for it, what if it never exists?
Oh, that, that's right, it might not pay it.
But here's what, here, in my mind is, in my mind, at the end of this, what you're gonna face is, so you do that, it's less of a transfer. If you don't do it, it's gonna be a bigger transfer, you're gonna have to do a transfer at the end of this budget. To get to a number, whatever it is that you want. Because you're not gonna find, you're not gonna get the savings out of it, you're gonna have to do a transfer bigger than, probably.
Bigger than this.
One, one or two of you want to really do, but I, I, yeah, so. You can change, you can change it, if you don't get it, then it just, really, that will take off of the assessment. Because you, you up the revenue, so it'll take off the assessment.
You, you said that that fee had not been touched in years and years and years.
Nineteen eighty-six, eight-four, something like that, yeah, one long time. And, and the figures that they arrived at was going through, uh, the cost of living year by year to get it to the forty dollars.
But even after they got to the forty dollars, they might not pay the forty dollars.
Who, the state?
Yeah.
I don't.
Because if there's no money to pay, then you don't pay.
That's the whole thing. The state is a small percentage of the total people. So in other words, if eighty percent of that is, is private pay, that's gonna be forty dollars. So, okay.
Oh, I see.
And even with the state paying half of that, they went from eight to twenty, which is.
Four hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's substantial, even with the state's payments. And, uh.
I figured that.
So in other words, I'm gonna propose to everyone that we, we put this up to a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That is modest compared to, you know, to, you know, a hundred percent increase you're talking about, but it's still, it's. I don't care if they don't want to prove it till July first, you can raise another twenty grand.
Sure.
In six months.
But we gotta get to a hundred and fifteen before we have to worry about raising that extra funds.
Yeah, that, that's wild.
We haven't got there yet.
Yeah, in fact, we haven't got to seventy.
No, no, COVID, Joe, what do you think?
But if you're able to raise that on others, that you may not hit the one fifteen, even what budget, it'll close that gap.
Good luck for that, for that, for that, for that, here. Knowing, listening to Scott, not saying that the only holdup here is an agency within county, within state government. You know behind the scenes that state government is gonna, is gonna find their way, you know, to the powers that be there and get their way. The rest of it is a done deal. So there's no, I, unless you know another entity out there who's working at, at reducing the body and you don't know, then it's almost like, once DHHS gets brow, done brow beating, the powers that be down there, they're gonna end up with forty for private and twenty for state.
And that's so sad, if you stop and think about it, that they're only worth, willing to pay eight dollars for professional service of legal doctrine. Eight dollars.
You know what I did?
And what did you tell them to do?
I told them every time they sent me one, I said I wanted to pause it.
Well, we've done that with a bunch of people.
Gentlemen, we've got to come up with a figure, it's gonna be one fifteen or one thirty-five or something like that, what do you want? Hundred and thirty-five, hundred and thirty-five, well, once, or twice, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, are you going to the BAC with that or sheriff?
Yeah.
With the one thirty-five?
Yeah, if it'll run it through, yeah, let's do it.
Now, wait a minute, what did you say?
Oh, yeah, I'll agree with you.
Okay. That's not what you said, right?
Oh, you said, oh, I think we're. Agree, we're holding hands and singing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't realize how you asked that question.
The last thing really, other than the contractual things on there, is get out of the vehicle miscellaneous. Down to that seventy to three hundred vehicles. Last year, Paul got a new vehicle, I didn't put any money in this year's budget. We've got eleven thousand forty-six dollars in there now, so I'm proposing seventy-five hundred this year. Then I'll come back next year with seventy-five hundred again and that'll give us money enough to trade this pickup. Because he puts so many more miles on, because he puts, he puts over forty thousand a year on the vehicle. And so.
That's the guy who delivers the.
Certainly, yes. That's good math.
Yes.
Because if you can, and give you twenty-six with trade-in, you can do that.
You should be able to do that.
He buys these ten K pickup, sometimes they cheat, I don't want them to be in two years.
Well, we were fortunate that when we bought this one this time, that they had those, those big readings.
Gentlemen, there's nothing else in there other than contractual salaries that's affected this. I agree with the seventy-five hundred, Jonathan, Paul, you all agree with that?
Yes.
Then we have an expenditure budget of one sixty-three, seven sixty-five, okay, Scott?
Yeah.
Okay, drug task force.
You should have, uh, supervising agent, department's report there, read, per.
First report, permanent thesis.
Is that?
Yeah, that way.
You sold along me.
Yeah. I love being able to tell people this, whatnot, but the sheriff and, and three or four of the police teams around the county years ago, whatnot, lobbied for a drug task force because the state wasn't, didn't have it off locally. And you might even been on the board and he pitched it to you, Jimmy Willis was there. Anyways, they gave us a hundred and fifty thousand seed money instead, no, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand seed money and whatnot. And put the budget together and it's never exceeded that. And what's it been, Scott, now? How many years?
God, twenty, fourteen years?
Fourteen years, yes?
Over, over one.
Twenty years. And it's never exceeded the two fifty because of other conditions. Now, what other state agencies can, can, can boast about that? So anyways, the revenues and MDA revenues is simply a reimbursement for wages, correct, Scott?
Yes.
The employee insurance is just what it says, it's, it's employees' contribution, work back towards their insurance. And the sheriff has a reserve account, uh, made up of four hundred years that come back to the state, that come back to the county from seizures. And unfortunately, that is down to twenty-five thousand, that's been up price and time.
Of course, went over to a hundred and fifty thousand all the time. It's almost went over 150,000 dollars.
Unfortunately, it's down to 25,000, but that's what it's there for, is for to offset the amount raised by taxation for this committee. And so sheriff is proposing using 25, and hopefully this, this will be a better year in 2022 for forfeitures. So are we okay with the 166,792?
Yeah.
And we are, going to expenditures.
The only increase there, I believe, is because we've got the salary increases and we up the overtime, 25,000.
I don't see anything other than affected by contractual, right?
Overtime.
Well, we're talking about, we're gonna have 25,000 from 5,070.
But that's also reflected, that's 100% universal, that's reflected in revenues, that increase.
Yeah, so if you cut this, you cut that next, yeah.
Good.
I get that.
So gentlemen, can we agree the 296,972?
Yes.
You can, and that's a done deal for your task force, Scott.
And for that?
No, let's move to agenda item two, request for advertised for deputy.
Some move.
That's what's left.
Move, motion made, decided to recruit advertisers for deputy, and just for the record, this is for a potential vacancy that we predict from this year.
Already initiated, budgeted.
Yep, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, so, this next item, this is where we transfer, can you give me a Reader's Digest version of this next, next item?
Well.
We're lowering, we're going through transfers.
Scott? See you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Michelle, I'll be down a little later.
Okay.
Yep, Scott Atkins.
Yep.
In order for us to accurately decide what we're going to transfer, we have to know that what's in the proposed budget is what we want to send to BAC, right?
Yes.
And the point I'm making is, is that we have gone through this budget, we've come to some tentative agreements on what we're going to send. We, if we're going to decide transfer today, we don't have enough time to do it, we should be going back through these budgets to see whether or not we want to reconsider any of those budgets. Because, Scott, I was on the impression that we never did transfers before BAC looked at our budget.
Well, that's your, yes, that's normally the commission's wish.
So in other words, you, you send it to the BAC, say, okay, we got 11.7% increase.
Oh, because you're, because, because what their, their job is the budget, not the levy, not the assessment.
Well.
I think it leads into one of the same, because their first question is, is well, why, you know, sort of, a chuckle, why, why did we get sent a 10.16% budget? Where's the transfer? Because in the end, they know that's what's gonna happen, and then we go, we move forward, and I say, we'll discuss that at the end.
Is that their, part of their function, though?
Well, their duties are so obscure that you don't really, in other words, since they can't make a recommendation on transfers.
Yeah, that's a good explain, yes.
So it, it, but if you send them a budget with a transfer number in there, that gives them the ability to increase or decrease the transfer number. If you send them a budget without a transfer in there, you reduce the risk of them deciding what the transfer is going to be. So they basically have to take the raw budget, work on it, send it back to us. And at that point, we'll make a determination as to how much of a transfer we would like to see to get this increase to an acceptable number.
Well, and, and, the BAC is in statute, so my reading of the statute is a good for BAC.
Advisory, although they hold a little bit of a power depending on their.
Yeah, but they're advising on the budget.
Right.
Not the levy, that's how I take it.
Okay.
So to me, their purview is this. And if we apply the, if we apply this transfer now, we're hiding some of the budget. No, not hide, but.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
Same thing the chair did, is that you would allow them, and I don't know if you allow them any more opportunity, but, um, I think again, they can, whether or not they could legally bound the budget by putting a number in there, I'm not so sure that would be. I, I think they do have authority over the revenues and the expenditures in making that vote, sending it back to you.
Yes.
But the transfer's up to the commission.
That's what I heard, yeah.
And you just reduce the risk of them sending us something back with a transfer in there that they really have overstepped their authority, but.
I would agree.
Leave it out, yeah.
All right, so you leave it out, you don't give them, you don't give them.
Has that been in the practice?
Yes, the last couple of years, yeah, basically, yeah, yeah.
So why would we deviate?
I think that's what the question is, do you want to, and my recommendation would be no. I can't remember the last year, if we left the 50,000 in there, or did we take that out completely too, because it's a 50,000 transfer there. I think we have that the last few years.
Yeah, I, I can't remember.
I'll look, I'll look, if we have it. So, as you're thinking, here's something else I want to, and you touched on it a little bit, that the sheriff's department was under question. I feel very confident in stating that what I see right now could result, uh, in a substantial, uh, surplus to the undesigned. So we finally actually have a positive undesigned fund balance. What that means is, take that into consideration because your transfers, I always remind you every year, just community benefits is really the only option, well, now you have two options.
So we need those numbers then?
Yeah, but I can, I can give you an estimate, I mean, I, you know, I can, it's the best I can do, but it's, it's a pretty good number.
But we should be cautious with that, like, we certainly do not want to apply every, and again, I think that's a discussion that we have after this comes back from the BAC, not now.
Yes, yes.
Hey, for a whole host of reasons.
Well, one reason is it gives me a few more months of data.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And see, the problem is, is you never really can predict what BAC is gonna do. We sent them back a budget that was higher than we were to accept. And we said, let them, let them take away it. They accepted the budget, sent it back to us, we're not cutting it. And so.
Well, department of state is always, you know.
Yeah, and so anyways, that's why I'm saying, if you send them this 10% over budget right now, let them work on it.
Well, it's not like we, like we padded anything, that 10%, this is what's washed out in the process.
It's a responsible.
It's a responsible budget that we, you know, it's tough for me to know of that, but for best of my logic, knowledge, it's a responsible budget. It goes through the process, and then we, we take it, when it comes through that process, and we apply these other factors.
Equitatively, if they do the dirty work, we don't have to.
No, I, I think we did, I understand your point, but I, I think we act in a responsible, non-political.
They send us this back, they want to, they want to approve a 10% budget. Now, having asked, having asked that question, I'll tell you, my opinion has been, these people represent the, the taxpayer, they don't represent us. This is what the Budget Advisory Committee represents, and if the taxpayers tell us, we're, we're okay with a 10% increase, what's it tell us?
That's what I said last year.
Yeah, that's what happened last year.
Well, I, I, I get your point, but it is a little more to us than that because we do have fiduciary responsibility to the districts that we.
Unless, if, if the taxpayer said, I'm okay with a 10% increase.
Well, that doesn't mean we have to be.
Right, no, and again, you have that other option, and it's a little different, the community benefits, the transfer in, to transfer in undesigned fund balance is all you're doing is you're taking, you alluded to it earlier, when, when you create it, well, now we have the opportunity to take that built-in flow, built-in safety.